Good, we're going to call this meeting the order of the Inglewood City Council. You can all rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will all continue to stand as pastors of the Inglewood Minister Alliance Council.
Let us bow, God of all grace, God of all mercy and kindness. We bow before thy presence acknowledging you as God and God all alone. Father, as we come now to this portion of the meeting that is about to take place, we invite your holy presence into this room and we pray, Lord, that your sovereignty will be exercised and the exercise of power here before these individuals. So we pray, Lord, that everything that is done is within your sanction. We pray that every decision will be made with love and compassion and an understanding that everything that is done will be for the greater good of everyone of the citizens of this city. So we pray right now for the protection of our peace officers as they exercise their duties and every department that's represented here that makes this city function. We pray, Lord, that you will be with every department head and every employee in their exercise of duties so that it can be done with precision and with excellence. We ask now for your grace and your mercy to forever be upon each and every one of us. It's in Jesus' precious name we pray. Let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. The prayer. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wimberly.
Here.
Councilwoman Wiley. Councilwoman Washington. Councilwoman Shaw. Councilwoman Howard. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
And Councilwoman Chisholm.
Here.
We have seven present tonight and we do have a court.
Awesome. Approval of the agenda with addition added to the presentation for, is that, what's her name?
Mary McLendon.
Mary McLendon from Glenn Anderson's office. And if we can have an approval of the agenda, Mary, before you start speaking.
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Support and...
Support.
Support. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. Approved. Approved the agenda carries. Come on, Ms. McLendon, come on. From Commissioner Glenn Anderson's office.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I want to say congratulations to each and every one of you. Congratulations to you, Mayor, and to the new council persons that are here today and to those returning council persons as well. I just want to say congratulations to you and I know that you will do a good job in this new, I'm gonna say decade that's coming up. We're on the horizons of a new decade and I just see good things happening in the city of Inglewood. I also want to speak to all of the dignitaries that are here and the fine citizens of Inglewood. I think most of you know who I am. I'm Mary McLendon from the Office of Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson. And I just want you to know, I'm excited about what's getting ready to happen here in the city of Inglewood. And you know what, Mayor? I did see a report today just prior to coming here. I don't know if anybody else saw that report, but I just happened to see that report on the city of Inglewood. And it was a fine report. It's a report of the mayor and a task force that's going to work with the city to get back to the city former gang bangers and former felons who are now entrepreneurs, giving back to the city of Inglewood. So that was just a great report and it's a good report on the city of Inglewood that you're trying to do some things to flip the script here, to be a change agent for the rest of the community. So I want you to know, congratulations on that report. So if the others didn't see that, they can try to catch it later on. But I just so happened to see that report just prior to coming here. So I want you to know, that's a great thing. But also, I just want to tell you that coffee hours will resume with the commissioner. They will resume on the second Monday of every month and in January will be on the 13th. And it begins in Westland at 9:00 a.m. at the library, which is the William Frost Library. Garden City, it begins at 10:30 and that's at the Maplewood Center. And in Inglewood, it's at 12 until 1 o'clock at the Western Wayne Family Center, 2700 Hamlin Boulevard. You're welcome to attend any of those coffee hours. You certainly have yours here in Inglewood. But if for some reason your time does not match with your schedule, you're welcome to go to any of the coffee hours. You can come and bring information to share or you can just come to get information as well. So the residents are welcome as well. Also, I just want you to know, the Light Fest is going on, the Wayne County Light Fest. And it's every day, 7 to 10 p.m., Monday through Friday, 6 to 10, Saturday and Sunday. And you enter in on Merriman Road. And the Light Fest is just beautiful. It's different this year. It has new displays. It only costs $5 per vehicle. So load it up and go on in and see the beautiful displays. Sometimes we say we have nothing to do, but we have some things right around us. And it's the longest light display in the country. So be sure to go and see that and take advantage of what you have here in your area. Also, I want to tell you that if you need to track the snow prior to going out, if you want to know before you go, you can go into www.compass.waynecounty.com and you can track where the county vehicles are going, getting rid of the snow. So you might not want to go in a certain direction because they haven't been there. Sometimes we need to know exactly which way to go because we need to be on time. So you can track those conditions through the compass.waynecounty.com to know before you go. Also, for those individuals that need assistance with DTE, with their payments, you can tap into www.dteenergy.com and there's an assistance program for those who actually need assistance. Some of the seniors need assistance, some of the veterans need assistance. So that's an area that you can go into if you need DTE assistance. So I just want to say to you, in case I don't see anymore before the new year that's coming, the holidays are coming, I need for you to know the county will close between Christmas and New Years. So if you need something processed, you better get it done. Hurry up. Trust me, you need to hurry up and get it done if you need something processed. I don't want you to think the whole county is shutting down. No, it's not. Because the essential services will be working. There will be snow removal and the other essential services the Wayne County has to provide will be open. But just incidental services, they will not exist because they will be closed. So if you need something done, I say hurry, hurry, hurry if you need to get it done right away. So thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and I'm looking for great things in this upcoming year. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. McLendon. All right, Chief, you're up.
Good evening, Council and everyone here. We just want to introduce, we have two officers that have just recently graduated from the academy. What is it, Friday?
Thursday.
Thursday. And we want to introduce them to Council and to our citizens. We have Officer Dukes here and we have Officer Whitlow. And leave him take him.
So, everybody. So Officer Dukes and Officer Whitlow just graduated the police academy after 19 weeks of training. They're going to be starting their field training officer program. They're gonna spend the next several months in their field training officer program. They're learning the ins and outs of how to police the city of Inglewood. Their positions were sponsored by Abe Hatchum with Midwest Recycling and Business Consortium. So our own businesses give back to the own community. All right. Thank you, everybody. Stay safe.
Awesome. Thank you. Thank you guys for your service already. We know you're gonna do a wonderful job in the community because you're from the community.
Both of these officers were actually previously auxiliary police officers.
Yeah. Yeah, from the community, so that's awesome. Good. All right then. Gift card presentation, National Christians Action.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the National Christians, which I'm the President and CEO, I've asked several families, went around and asked them to come to council meeting tonight. We wanted to show our appreciation to you, Mr. Mayor. We want to present these ten gift cards for some families here in Inglewood. Have a Merry Merry Christmas. Amen. And we thought it would be fitting to put them together. I know we can't get everybody's name, but we figured out, we went down and tried to be a blessing to a few. So at this time, we're just gonna call their names and the mayor's gonna present these, have the names that we're gonna present them.
The first name for tonight is Ms. Danielle Paustin.
You guys want some more to come here? You guys want some more to bring them on? Okay. Let's give it my hand.
The next name we have tonight is Ms. Andrea Ray. He don't want to come.
Don't make it.
It's okay.
Don't make it. Don't make it, all right?
All right.
So, and then also too. We got the good fellows actually just to thank you too. All right. Well, thank you. You look sharp, man. You look good. You look, you look good, man. You can come stand with us. You look good.
The next name we have tonight is Mr. and Ms. Mickey Robinson.
Mickey Robinson?
Mr. and Ms. Mickey Robinson.
Okay. Thank you. Ma'am?
The next name we have is Ms. Alicia Maxwell.
You can stand right in here. Come on. Say cheese. Beautiful. Thank you, guys.
The next name we have tonight is Ms. Crystal Wilson.
You get lucky to be here.
The next name we have tonight is Ms. Nicole Taylor.
All these beautiful kids. I'm talking about. Hey, guys. Come on, you wanna turn around? Right here, take a picture of me? Take the camera up near front of me.
The next name we have tonight is Ms. Christine Williams.
Take your time now. Merry Christmas to you.
The next name we have tonight is Ms. Anna M. Risen. Ms. Shaw? Okay, sorry.
Just get the picture taken. Come on. Just now, before we go to our stage, I just asked some of the members that here, normally we don't, we don't show our faces, but some of the members that's here from the National Christians Action, would you please stand and be recognized at this point? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, sir. Just round the corner.
I think I know where you at.
All right. Good, that's what it's about, family taking care of each other. That's family taking care of each other. Everyone in the community working together. All right. So for our final presentation of the night, Plan Moran. Ryan, you can come forth. Ryan, you're gonna have to use the big voice. You have to use your big voice for sharing.
Ryan, no problem, sir.
All right, good. He know how to work for it. Good.
Is it okay if I stand here? If you need me to stand there?
For sure, yeah, stand there and then that way you can just point to whatever you need to point to and go from there.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Yep, just use your big, big voice.
Yes, I will do that. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council. My name is Brian Camiller. I'm a partner with Plan Moran. My firm has been providing accounting services to the city of Inglewood for many years. We work for the CFO, Mr. Carrington. This is the first time that I've had the opportunity to come speak to the city. In my role as leader of this practice, there are 20 individuals that do nothing but provide internal accounting to local units of government such as the city of Inglewood. And I've had my finger on Inglewood for a number of years, but just in the last year, responsibility for this account has been given to me. So this is the first opportunity I have to speak with you and I appreciate that opportunity. What I have is four or five graphs and slides that talk about some current financial matters for the city, particularly around the city's general fund and the city's water and sewer fund, which I know from other conversations has been a, is a significant issue, will continue to be a significant issue. So first, an update on the annual audit. So the city has a fiscal year end of June 30th and by state law, the city is required to complete and file its audit with the state of Michigan within six months of year end, so by 12/31. Unfortunately, this year, there are some unforeseen circumstances that are going to prevent that time being filed. The number one issue would be that the city has not yet received its actuarial report related to the police and fire pension system. It should come any day, but even if it were to arrive this second, there is so many procedures that have to happen between the city team and the city's auditing for Raymond. There's back and forth. We do some work, they review it, they'll ask questions, we answer questions, so on and so forth. So that even if we got the report literally the second, there isn't enough time in order to get it done between now and 12/31. However, we do have a commitment from Raymond that as soon as we're able to do things and we'll get into their process, we expect that it will be filed no later than mid-January. Is there any implication to the city for being late? The answer to that is, not really. No money will be withheld from the city as long as we get that done and to the state by the end of January. So if it being done by mid-January, the city will not be held to any penalty. This is a summary of the city's general fund going back to 2013. The darkening bars represent city's revenue. The light green bar represents the city's expenses. So back during the consent agreement, changes were made and you could see in 2014, 15, 16, and 17 that revenues exceeded expenditures. This is when the city was digging itself on a deficit. A deficit is when your liabilities are greater than your assets or you have negative fund balance. But what you'll notice is that disparity, that gap, that surplus of revenue over expenditures as you go from 14 to 17, the gap decreases. Expenses grow faster than revenue sources, to the point that in 2018, where the city effectively broke even. Now, in 2019, you don't have the final audit and financial statements, but this is where our general fund is at. Expenses exceed revenue. Let me get out, we're just gonna get to the seat. So in 2019, you do have a deficit for the year. That means that your expenses are greater than revenue. And when you spend more than you make, you have to take the difference out of savings. In this case, savings is called fund balance. So your fund balance is going to go down in 2019. We'll see that on the next slide. The 2020 column is the budget as adopted by the city back in the spring. That was a balanced budget that revenues equal expenses. Now, you'll also notice though that the expense column is less than it was in 18. In fact, it was less than it was in 18 as well. So was it the perfect budget? Well, no budget's perfect. It's a guess, it's a series of educated guesses. But we do believe that there were some inaccurate projections included in that number. And so, once the audit is done, which should, as I said before, is mid-January, then we will turn our focus to the fiscal year 2020 budget. We will do an analysis to see what revenues are trending and what expenses are trending. And we will bring back to council in February, a budget amendment. That we already know, some revenues need to increase, some revenues need to decrease. Some expenses need to increase, some expenses need to decrease. There are gonna be changes going both ways. But it will give us a more clear picture of where the city's fiscal year is going to end come June 30, 2020. Now, what this slide shows is fund balance for the same years that the previous slide showed. And what you can see is that back in 23, during the consent agreement, there was a deficit. This is, this is when your assets are less than, or excuse me, yes, your assets are less than your liability. So from 13, 14, 15, 16, you were digging your way out of that deficit and your fund balance crested in 2017. Basically broke even in 18, but it did use up just a tiny bit of fund balance. But now in 19, because your expenses were greater than revenue, you're using up approximately $1.8 million of fund balance. Now, we said before on the last slide, the 2020 budget shows revenue and expense being equal. If that happens, fund balance will not change. You'll have the same amount in 2020 as you do in 2019. What's different about this graph is for 2020, you said, well, what if we have another year like 2019? What if expenses exceed revenue to the same extent? If that happens, you're gonna use up the remaining amount of your fund balance. So when we bring this budget amendment to you in February, it's going to be very important to consider what if any operational changes need to take place because you need to prevent this from happening. It's not okay to run your fund balance down to zero. So we have a couple of notes on the screen. The note in the upper right-hand corner talks about the GFOW, that's the Government Finance Officers Association. You're not bound to follow what GFOW says, but it's more like an industry best practice. What the GFOW recommends is that a general fund should have in reserve, or in its fund balance, two months of operations. So that's two divided by 12, or 16.67%. So of your expenses, if you have a $15 million budget, you should have 16.67% of that always in your fund balance, according to GFOW. Now, the city of Inglewood has a policy that says, we're not gonna dip below a certain amount. Now, your policy says that you'll always stay within 10 to 15% of expenses.
So we do have a policy on the...
It is a policy. We got it.
Okay, I'm sorry, not being out of it. I was just making sure that we clear.
Yeah, so that actually, having a policy, a minimum fund balance policy, is a best practice of GFOW. You've just chosen that your policy is just a one, you know, one and a half percent less than what GFOW is recommending minimum. I have no issue with having that policy. But with the dollar amounts here, 16.6% of your operations is about $2.5 million. Your fund balance at, in... Your fund balance at, in two thousand nineteen, after having this loss, is less than two billion. Now, according to your policy, ten percent is about one and a half million, uh, fifteen percent is two and a quarter. So as of June thirty, two thousand nineteen, you're still within your policy, you're still in compliance with what you've set for yourself. But you are less than what the GFOWA says. Now, if two thousand twenty happens like two thousand nineteen, and you run fund balance down to zero, you will, or any amount less, you know, if you use up any of your fund balance, you will continue, you will not be in compliance with your policy, you will run it down past ten percent. So, uh, another note here, at the, the very top middle of the slide, talks about some additional revenue in two thousand twenty that is not recorded in two thousand nineteen. This is related to some grants. So, there are specific accounting rules that we have to follow. And we're not allowed to recognize revenue unless certain conditions are met. So when it comes to grants or other revenue sources, if you don't receive it within sixty days of the year end, you're not allowed to accrue it as of June thirty. So, grant revenue received in September, October, November, December, if you receive it then, but you had earned it back in June, and May, and April, and before, you're not allowed to count it as of June thirty. So we know that money's coming, because you did earn it, but we're not allowed to recognize it. So that will be a positive adjustment to the budget in come February. Returning our focus to the water and sewer fund. What this graph shows is your net cash as of June thirty, going back to two thousand thirteen. So, net cash is the cash you have in the bank, plus or minus any amount that the water and sewer fund has either loaned to another fund, or another fund has loaned to the water and sewer fund. And this happens all the time, it's just the way the bills get paid, it might get taken out of a different bank account, and then it immediately gets paid back. So that's not alarming, but we want to represent, doesn't matter what's in the bank, what is water and sewers. So, according to this graph, every year since two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen, two thousand seventeen, net cash of the water and sewer fund has been on the upswing. Did a little bit of a dip in eighteen, but you're back on the upswing in two thousand nineteen. This is all planned, the city has a water and sewer rate model that calculates what the rates should be, based on what we know our operational needs are. We have to pay our employees, we have to buy water, we have to pay for sewage treatment, we have to fix things as they break, we have to pay debt that's already been incurred. But we also want to have so much money in the bank, so that if something breaks, if you have some kind of, uh, water main break, you know, you want to prevent a sinkhole, so we don't have time to go out and borrow money, we have to have our own money in the bank. No different than how we run our household, you need to have something in the bank, just in case something happens. And so, as of June thirty, two thousand nineteen, you had between six and seven million dollars in the bank, in the water and sewer fund. Now, six, six to seven million dollars is a good chunk of change, to any one of us, that is a, a lot of money. But, for a city the size of Inster, you have hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure under every single street of the city. Those pipes are very, they're old and they're expensive to replace now, and you're going to have to replace them. There's quite a bit of work that we know has to happen in the water and sewer system. In the meeting prior to this, there was talk about the lead lines, five thousand dollars a house, times four hundred and thirty-five houses is over two million dollars. So you can eat this six million dollars up very quickly. In fact, there are other items that are also that we know. Uh, the asset management plan shows that there is sixty million dollars of work that needs to be done. So this is, uh, this came out of the, uh, Saw Grant Study. So the Saw, the, the grant was to do the study, tell us what we have to do to our system. The end result is, you have sixty million dollars of work to be done.
And that's the water system as far as the pipes underneath?
Pipes, mains, infrastructure, anything to do with the system.
Sewage.
Sewage as well. So now, the Rouge Valley system, that's where your sewage goes. So you buy your water from the Great Lakes Water Company, used to be City of Detroit. Your sewage that goes out goes to the Rouge Valley Treatment Plant. You're a member of that plant along with ten or twelve other communities. And, when they have a repair to make to the treatment plant, they pass the cost on a ratable basis back to its member communities. So if you make up seven percent of the sewage that goes to this plant, you're gonna pay approximately seven percent of the costs that are incurred. Now, they know that they have significant improvements that have to be done to that plant, and they're going to do them. And they're going to pass those costs on to you. The specific number that is the City of Inster's, I do not know what that is, it's been fluctuating, it isn't final yet. But, it is also multiple millions of dollars. So, when you add the three of these things up, and anything else that comes up that you need to do to your system, that six to seven million dollars is not sufficient to cover. What does that mean? Well, it means that you're going to have to come up with additional money from somewhere. Where will that come from? You have, there's possibilities. I can't say that they're options, because I don't know that you can choose any of them, whichever one you like. That's for the city to, to figure it out over time. But it could be rate increases, it can be issuing debt. Someone in the audience at the last meeting suggested there might be grants available from either the county or the state. That's something that the city needs to look into and get a definitive answer, one way or another. So we're not here to tell you, you have to raise rates, you have to do something, but we know you're going to do these fixes. And those fixes have to be paid for. So, however you go about it, it will be up to the city to decide later.
And one of those costs, the Rouge Valley, is the actual dredging of the Rouge and expanding it out, correct, Rome?
Yeah.
To bring in the, to bring in the, the, what is that we doing down there?
Rouge Valley has a CSO base, you've got to do CSO base. And they got to order the paper from people, creating the river dredge, they got to do some dredging. I think the first five years, there's a dredging, some pipe relining, there's some new pipe. Uh, that figure was giving me about eighty million over the next five years, dividing by sixteen.
Yeah, eighty million divided by sixteen. So that's eighty million is not your share, you're gonna get a piece of it. So now, on the lead line replacement, uh, as Rome was talking about earlier, it is, you, you have fourteen years to do it, and it has to be so many per year. Uh, I have, I met with the city last week that, uh, same boat as you, that they have older houses that have these lead lines and they need to replace them, they have the same amount of time. Uh, they're going to issue bonds and do it all in a two-year period, just because that's what they have determined is best for their community. Doesn't mean that you have to do that, doesn't mean it's best for Inster, but there are options. Now, you have to do this, but it's the method of, how soon, how fast, do you choose to do it?
Okay, any questions from, I'm pretty sure it's questions, who want to go first? Questions from the council? Councilwoman Wiley?
Um, this, you were talking about a penalty that would be imposed if we didn't get this in on time, um...
The, the audit you're referring to?
Yeah, when, when is that timeframe?
So, if you don't file your audit on time, what the state can do is withhold your state share revenue until such time as you become in compliance, by you, by finalizing and uploading that statement. State shared revenue is paid every other month. So the next available payment is February first. So if you don't have your audit done by then, they can hold on to that February first payment. But, I have no concerns that the city will not upload by then. I have every confidence the city will be done with the audit and upload those statements well before February first.
It should be noted that, um, the state is still withholding some state shared revenue from two hundred and forty-two thousand. From two thousand eighteen, correct?
Correct.
Because some things weren't submitted on time?
So, in the June thirty, two thousand eighteen audit, there were findings, as there will be findings in this year's audit, there are always findings in any audit. When you have a finding, then the state of Michigan Department of Treasury sends you a letter that says, we noticed you have findings, please tell us how you're going to correct them, and what the timeframe is for when you're going to do that. And so, the response to, back to the state, from the city, was late, and so they started withholding the, a portion, not all of it, but a, a small portion of your state share revenue. And as soon as they, uh, Mr. Carrington, that response has been sent to them.
Yeah.
So as soon as, and it's, it's the state of Michigan, so things don't always work lightning quick. But as soon as it's, the right person reads that letter and says, yes, the City of Inster is now in compliance, they will release that two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars.
But that's from two thousand eighteen.
Same process is going to happen in nineteen, the city needs to make sure that letter gets filed quickly.
Oh, it's good to know.
When you're talking about the, um, amount of the penalty, do you have any idea what percentage that is, or?
Well, they will withhold the entire state share revenue payment, I, I don't know what the dollar amount is, whatever you get, divide by six, and that's approximately correct.
I just like to ask, is, is that, is that coming from?
I'm sorry, council, council, I'm sorry, councilwoman Wiley at the floor, were you done now? Thank you. Uh, yeah, we're here, council, council.
What, what I'm concerned about is that, number one, is, is this coming from, um, not properly filing, uh, on time? Part two is that they're asking for, is coming from us not filing on time, or how, how does it come, saying we're late, and we know we withhold? Turn something?
Well, so the, the, this year's audit being late is primarily due to us not getting our actuarial report from the city's actuarial firm. Uh, part of this is newer in the last two years. So, the GASB, which is the, the, the body that gives you the accounting report that you as a city have to file. GASB passes new rules every year, so. Last year, they passed GASB number seventy-five, related to retiree health care. And so last year, six months before anyone needed it, every city was getting their information on it, because they knew they had to implement the standard for the years ended June thirty, two thousand eighteen. And so, you and everybody else got your stuff in on time, got your actuarial report back, your audits filed on time. This year, me, me, you, half of my clients did not file their, uh, get their actuarial information in, correct, on time. And so you're one of three or four cities that I deal with that just doesn't have what it needs in order to complete the audit on time, and plan to do it in mid-January. So, it's really not on the city, it's on the actuary to get stuff done. And, they just haven't ramped up the way they did a year ago, to get everything to us now. So, they've promised us that they will have the evaluation to us this week. And even though it's still fifteen days before year end, it's not enough time for the city to do what it needs to do, the auditors to do what they need to do, have that back and forth communication before the document is finalized and sent up to Lancer.
Do you think that the responsibility of audit firm?
It's not the audit firm, no, it's, the city needs to get the actuarial.
For, uh, councilwoman, for, for that information the city submits, we contract with the actuary that, that Brian is referring to. We contract with them, request the report, we provide them with the information. Uh, as he alluded to, in recent years, the state has been passing some additional, uh, requirements along with different accounting regulations that have gone into place. And it's essentially just taken longer than in past years for the actuarial, actuaries to turn around those actuarial reports. So it's not the, the audit firm, they're waiting on, on the, on the report that we requested from the, uh, actuarial.
So this is the person that we contracted with?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Sir, you were done, councilwoman?
Yes.
What, one thing I don't understand is that, you said for the past two years, the city had expended more than it earned. Now, I was here on council when we had to pass a consent agreement to hold back some of the things that we had in this community, we lost a lot of things in the people's faces that we saw, we had to cut police officers. We passed a, a control measure so that we would not go back into the same situation again. Now, I just don't understand that, why this happened? Why we started spending more money than what we were bringing in? Was, wasn't any monthly meetings held to identify, let council identify what was going on, so that they would know to put the brakes on the spending? Because it was a horrible thing back in two thousand twelve and thirteen, when I was here the first time. And the, and the people's faces were, they were cringing, they were upset, they were mad, I was upset and mad, because we had to do such a thing. Now, I'm back again to see this same thing go, going on, without any brakes, we passed some measures so that there can be some brakes on the spending, and I just don't understand if the, the previous coun, or the past council didn't understand that they were spending money?
I don't have an answer for that, this is my first time speaking to the city council.
I, I mean, it just...
Are you saying that this is your first time, I'm sorry, sorry, I mean...
To your city council.
To this, to this body, you, you presented before.
No, he's prior, there was, there was a, another partner prior to, to Brian, Brian indicated he's, you've been on, uh, the, uh, reporting partner for a little more than a year or so.
Less than.
That's in a year, so he's, there was a, another partner that was just off of...
So, so why?
Did you want to, maybe the treasurer needs to get into that a little bit?
So, I, I think, uh, Councilman Shaw, to everyone here and, and the audience as well, um, you know, part of the issue is, as the city came out of the consent agreement, there were a number of different things that the city, uh, did in order to get out of that consent agreement. Uh, you know, over the last several years, there's a number of things that the city has done since we got out of the consent agreement. Um, and these were, by and large, conscious decisions that were, um, brought before council that we, they were debating, they were voted upon. Uh, several years ago, the city had part-time police officers, it had tier-two police officers, who were not full-time. Uh, we no longer have that, all the officers in the City of Inster are now full-time. When they were part-time, they did not have benefits, they did not have pensions, uh, those things have now changed. Uh, this was a, a, a policy decision that was made by the city. There's a cost associated with that, you know, as everyone can recall, there was a time not that long ago when City Hall was not open on Fridays. We were closed for an hour and a half during Monday through Thursday. Um, that's no longer the case. You know, there's a cost associated with that. We've added a number of firefighters to the fire department, even though some of that, uh, some of those costs are offset by grants, there's still a cost that's associated with that from the city, for both the, uh, earnings that they, uh, that they get, the, the benefits, the pension cost, um, and these things often increase every year. We've had, uh, a situation, up until a couple of years ago, we had labor agreements that had not been negotiated for several years. Uh, many of those, those labor unions had, uh, pay, uh, pay cuts, they had days without pay. All of those things have been restored, and in some cases, there were some additional raises that were provided. So, what we're seeing now is the accumulation of these things, uh, that were done, uh, a number of different times, a number of different instances. Have they been beneficial to the city? In many regards, yes. But the thing we have to keep in mind is that there is always a cost associated with these things. Um, and that should always be, be, you know, we should be mindful of that. And in order for us to act responsibly, we got to balance the benefit out with the cost. And what we're seeing now is the accumulation of all those things that have occurred, uh, some of which I just outlined. Uh, you know, uh, Councilman Shaw, you and I talked, you know, just in the last fiscal year, there was seven hundred thousand dollars in deficit spending that was approved via the, uh, budget amendments from last year. So this, these were things that were presented.
Wow.
Um, you know, they, these were, these were not things that were done in the dark, these were not secrets. Um, these were, these were conscious decisions that were made. Uh, so it's not, you know, a, a, a situation of, of it being any secret how we, you know, largely have gotten into this situation, just like it wasn't a secret how we got out of the financial, uh, challenges that we face. So, uh, you know, it's, it's, and answering your question, it's, it's, you know, some, the city made some tough decisions to, to get out of the consent agreement.
Yes.
And, you know, there was some, some desire to, to reverse some of those decisions. And there, again, there's a cost associated with that, and we're seeing the, the, the price tag associated with that.
Let's see, Mr. Chair, it, there was policies, and we talk about these... Let's see, Mr. Chair, it, there was policies, and we talk about these policies. There was policies already put in place for us not to even go there. So some, you know, the policies was overwritten and they shouldn't have been. Somebody should have been watching the dollars like they supposed to be, or they talking about they were, and they wasn't. When we talk about the fiduciary responsibilities of this city, we have to be the fiduciary responsible persons up here. Because this is appalling to me. It is appalling. So now, now, we're gonna have to pull back again, tighten our belts up again, look at these people's faces just and tell them, look, we have to cut again. We have to close again. And they're gonna throw tomatoes again because the, they not comfortable with the service. And we move too quickly, we move too fast, and we was not conservative enough to slow roll ourselves into a better position. So my my question, I, I know, Mayor Proton, I know, I I have another question, Mr. Chair. Are we gonna be ready for the deficit elimination payments of three hundred thousand to the state by twenty twenty-two? Are we gonna be ready because we don't want any more discrepancies with the state, you know, coming in in this house?
Just speak, speak to that treasurer as it relates to a loan that was taken out.
What uh, Councilman Shaw's referring to, uh, the city back in two thousand twelve, I believe it was, Brian, took out a a three million dollar emergency loan as part of the uh, consent agreement. Uh, that loan was provided by the state to the city to help with, at the time, the city was was uh, having trouble meeting its uh, obligations in terms of payment of bills and the like, and was experiencing some cash flow problems. So as as part of the consent agreement, that three million dollar loan was provided uh, by the state emergency loan board. And uh, it's, it was essentially, it is essentially a ten-year interest-only loan, and we start making the principal payments. Um, so so since that time, we've been paying interest on the loan. And uh, beginning in fiscal year twenty twenty-two, basically as the fiscal year that starts in July first twenty twenty-two, a little more than a year and a half from now, we'll begin repaying the principal. Uh, and that three million dollars will be repaid uh, at a rate of three hundred thousand dollars a year for ten years. Uh, and so to your your uh, the question that Councilman Shaw asked was, will the city be prepared to uh, make that payment? Um, and we certainly have that uh, identified on our debt schedule. Each year, we uh, had set aside funds within the budget. We haven't restricted those funds. Uh, meaning we haven't completely uh, walled those funds off for for any purpose except for paying that that loan. But certainly, it's something that uh, beginning in that uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-two, that will have to be a priority for us to make sure we pay that as we do all of our debt obligations and debt servicing and uh, other uh, financial obligations.
Mayor Proton?
Yes, um, speaking of watching the money, um, some of us was up here fighting, um, talking about spending in general funds. But when you have, I don't know why people was approving it, um, some were good, some were not. But we have to be mindful that we gave everybody back what we took. But the people never did look to see what kind of funds we had coming in to offset that. So going forward, I would like the mayor to have Plant Moran meet with us every three months. So we can actually find out what's really going on.
And if I could, if I could just add to that, though, we're actually going to form from this body a finance committee. And we'll be meeting um, once, we actually meet there and probably be there every other day. But um, Plant, yeah, with Plant Moran, we'll be meeting with them each month. And then we'll be bringing a report together back to this body, to the entire community, so. And then we'll have them come back, Plant Moran come back every three months, so that makes sense.
I think because, you know, a lot of stuff that was on that piece of paper, unless you understood what was going on financially. Uh, you can argue all day, but if you don't stick together as a body to note that someone is flagging the budget to talk about, then we're gonna keep going into this situation. So going forward, I would like, thank you for being here today. I would like for you to come in, you know, like you said, quarterly, to give us an update. So we can go from there and stay out of this. So now we're gonna have to make crucial decisions as a body relating to our budget. And what we're gonna do.
That'll be coming before uh, the second week in January? Did you say the second week in January back in February? In February? Okay. So our audit will be coming in and then we'll make decisions. Let's say we formulate the finance committee and then go from there.
Cause it's gonna be some tough decisions again, cause we're gonna, we basically back where we started at when I first started, so as far as finances.
Yeah.
Yep.
But um, not putting the blame on anybody, we just gotta move forward and just go from there. But we have to have more checks and balances. And we have to read and understand. Um, I know I was in Darren's office a lot with the budget and asking questions, but that's what we have to do. We have to read and we have to ask questions. It's okay to ask questions if you don't know uh, before we pass the budget. So, okay, that's all I yield.
Mr. Chair, I.
Uh, 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 you have to yield first. Ma'am, did you have anything? Councilwoman Washington? Okay, go ahead, Councilman Shaw.
Now, I have a another question with the audits. Now, we did two, passed two audits, seventeen and eighteen. There was some discrepancies in the water and sewage. We started out with fifty-six thousand. Then from the next audit, we went to two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Why? Why did we accrue so much in the next budget of of two hundred and fifty, over two hundred some thousand dollars in 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 the in the audit? And there was no uh, control mechanisms that were told to the audit of what we need to do. Only thing they talked about was hiring another person. But do in doing so in seventeen, it didn't stop anything, it wasn't controlled because we went to two hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Negative, negative, negative?
Negative.
Can you speak for us?
I'm not sure what.
Outstanding. It was outstanding conditions. The city carried an approximately fifty-six thousand in outstanding utility services.
That's utility, that's people who's not paying.
Yeah, I just, I wanna, I just wanna understand that. I wanna understand that, you know, as we're looking at the budget to actuarials, as we're looking at the revenue and expenditures, when we're looking at this money's being not collected because it is from one year, that's a, that's a lot of dollars uh, that was not collected. And all we did was hire a person that was supposed to be monitoring it. So my question is, is what happened?
And just just to make sure, I, I, we, the firm, uh, what you're referring to, I believe one of the audits, they referenced the uh, overdue accounts receivable, it's the city's accounts receivable and overdue accounts. And I mean, it, I I don't think anyone uh, would disagree that the city has had challenges with the uh, metering. Um, combined with, we have issues as it relates to unpaid bills. We have a number of renters, squatters, we deal with unauthorized usage. Uh, so a combination of those things, and we, you know, we've been working to try and unravel all of that, you know, it's a uh, number of different dynamics that that play into that. Uh, in the ci- you know, the city's been trying to uh, address those things. We've been trying to deal with the meter issue, trying to deal with the billing issue, uh, but it it is a continuing challenge.
You know what, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Chair, we we've been dealing with that since two thousand and twelve when Alan Young and Associates was in auditing.
Sure, I know.
Do we still have an empty policy? A shut-off policy?
Uh, we 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 do have a shut-off policy, but but in all honesty, we we don't have enough uh, department resources to keep up with this, with the shut-offs.
We just, we there is still not covering what we need.
I want, I want just, I'll I'll move on from that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I understand that this is the first conversation that we're having about this. This is not the last. This is the first conversation. What we have to do is get out ahead of it and make sure that everyone's aware of what's going on. Um, I totally agree with all the comments that have been made, but I understand that this is one community. It doesn't make a difference what happened in the past is what's happening in the future. So we're gonna look for resolution. We're gonna look for uh, ways to solve the problem. And we're gonna look for more ways to raise the revenue, chief, to raise the revenue, chief, thank you. Um, you, no, sir. So we want to make sure, again, that we have public participation and that we're putting out the right information together. That's the main thing now as we move forward. Understanding that it is a policy in place and then, of course, adhering to that. And and lastly, that it is the mayor's budget. So what I'll be doing is I'll be working with, again, with uh, our treasurer, along with uh, Plant Moran, along with two members of this body. And I hope that everybody wanna volunteer to be part of the finance committee. So then we'll have all the information and then we can bring the information back to the general public. And then as we talk about the census, when we have those town hall meetings, we'll also be incorporating the budget and talking about the budget. Does everybody agree with that? All right, good. So let's move along. All right, then. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, we're right into it. Let's see where we're at now. Thank you. All right, no public hearings. Our consent agenda with the items, do we have anything that we added to the, the consent agre- agenda? We're all set. Consent to, just consent agenda, what's your pleasure? You guys ready to come back to it? Council, council, are you guys ready, Mayor Proton? Okay, um, I have a motion on the floor for the consent agenda. It's been motion by Councilman Chisholm is in support. Been moved and supported. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carries. All right, boards and commissions, let's start on the far left, Councilman Williams.
Chairman, I would like to recommend that Mr. Lenora Womack be uh, reappointed to the Board of Review.
Support. Just speak up too, because again, in the audience, the mics are not working, guys, because we we we're having a little bit of technical difficulty because we're changing over the system. So we are upgrading our system and for whatever reason, the wire didn't get plugged in, it was like the wires all over the place. So, no, I didn't unplug it, so. But it 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 is being recorded, so if you wanna go back and watch it, everything that we're saying, you can actually hear over the broadcast, okay? You just can't hear through the mics tonight, okay? So, thank you, sir. Use that voice.
I I would like to make a recommendation to uh, reappoint Mr. Lenora Womack back on the Board of Review.
Do we have support?
Support.
Been moved and supported. Do we need roll call or? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carry. You got another one, sir?
Yes, I also would like to uh, put Mr. Lenora Womack on the Beautification Committee in my.
In your place. Okay, so, and let me say this, guys. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, twenty vacancies on the Beautification Committee. So that's, the Beautification Committee is actually, Mr. Tony, do you hit that up? Tony? Tony, you hit that up? Okay. So I'm pretty sure you would like some help on the Beautification Committee too, right? So if you wanna volunteer for that, please do not hesitate to let us know so we can appoint you. Because beautification is one of the main things that we need to be focused on in our community, not just in the springtime, but all year round. So we'll be working together doing that. So, um, you said you wanna take yourself off or you wanna stay on?
Um, I'm working.
Oh, okay. So you just want somebody to take your place tonight? Right, okay. Okay, all right, good then. So we're adding her on or you staying? What we doing? Cause you are.
I'm adding her on the Beautification Committee.
So she's not taking your place?
No, I, no, I I'm I'm um, talking about that, I'm talking.
Okay, all right, then. Is this support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? I just have a motion carries. Anything else, sir?
That's it.
All right, Councilman Shaw? The appointments, where's permission?
Ms. McDaniels, I would like to point her back to the Board of Review.
Name please, total name please?
Mama Ma, Mama McDaniels.
To the. Okay. And are all of these, uh, are all of the, this is through the clerk, I'm clerk. This is, this is for you. Do you, you keep up with this, correct? With all of the the expiration dates and where people are at and send a notification to people? Okay, emplacements, okay. All right, then. So we had a motion on the floor for Norma McDaniels to be. Is it the Zoning Board of Appeals? And Norma's actually here tonight, back there. Norma, raise, wave your hand back there. Here you go, just in case you guys don't know who Norma is. Norma, Norma's been serving our community for a number of years and she's continuing to serve, so thank you, Norma. All right, it's been moved and supported. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any nays? I just have a motion carries. Anything else you got for me, sir?
That's all I have.
All right, Mayor Proton?
I just wanna ask about the housing and redevelopment. Um, we have six members, but we only have five, so.
Housing and redevelopment, okay, yep. I do have an appointment for uh, housing. Um, again, what I would like to do, because housing is, we know in our community, is a very sensitive is- issue right now. And we wanna make sure we have the right people serving in every position, but especially in this position. So it's the mayor's appointment, and let's be clear about that, that the commission on uh, housing and the uh, redevelopment is the mayor's appointments. Everyone that's there now, I've spoken to them outside of, I believe, Della Scott. I haven't spoke to her. Is she's, she's the, what? The Sala? Okay, I haven't spoke to her yet. I think I've talked to her in passing. We know that Carolyn Smith has actually resigned. Carolyn Smith? Yes, uh-huh. Yeah, she sent it in to me. Yes, ma'am, of course. I thought you were on the CC. I'll CC you on that. All right, so what I would like to do, and I mentioned this at the last council meeting, is to actually conduct a panel and have those folks come in and sit before our panel and do kinda like an interview with them. So I don't know if it'll be the pleasure of the board to uh, do like a um, a special meeting for those appointments and people that wanna appoint because each one of us have a person that possibly may wanna serve, and then we pick the best person together. And that's how I wanna move together. Understand that, and I don't wanna do anything on my own. I wanna move together so we'll be on the same page, okay? All right, so we'll be, we'll be, we'll be revisiting that, Mayor Proton, at the beginning of the new year.
Okay, so those, so those members, those residents who wants to uh, actually sign up in this contact?
Well, actually, it'll be, yeah, it'll be through the clerk because uh, uh, Councilwoman Wiley explained to us last time around about the the policy that we have as it relates to uh, people actually putting in their resume. So we kinda know who they are, what, you know, what their background are, so we make sure that they're a right fit. You don't want to lose anybody anywhere serving on these boards and commissions, okay? That make sense? All right, did you have anything else?
Whatever's it.
Okay.
Or Mr. Chair?
Sir.
Mayor Proton had asked, cause she said, she's counting five, but it says six members, that's five.
Okay. Oh, so we missing somebody. Oh, so it should be five.
I think it should be five.
It should be five, it's got six, okay.
So you got six, six members.
Is that, that's correct, isn't it? Five, right.
Should be five.
It should be five, okay, so we have to change it, okay, all right.
Okay, so we'll just change that and uh, we need to amend that. So wouldn't it, we actually need to probably go back and amend that in the minutes? Okay, all right, make sure. All right, just so we all recognize that it is five members. Thank you, Councilman Chisholm, catch me on that. Good. I'm Mayor Proton, both of you got here. Okay, good. Councilwoman Wiley, did you have any?
Uh, no, I don't have any to suggest, but um, the library board needs to be updated there because we have two people who have been elected.
All right.
And they're not listed here. Like uh, Mr. Kindelay is gone, and so is uh, Mr. Wells.
Mr. Wells?
Okay, he's gone.
Shaw, will you? Okay.
So we could update that.
First.
And then, of course, change.
You have all those changes for you. Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Chisholm.
Yes, I know, you, we were just talking about, I guess, kinda sorta changing the, uh, process where we vet people once they submit an application.
And that wouldn't be necessarily for everybody, I just think in the, in the issue of the, uh, housing.
Well, yeah. Person who is interested, so I'll, sometimes, I know the rest will send us the application, and then we forward it over to the clerks, I'll send it to you and the clerk.
Yeah, I like to do the first part of twenty twenty, I think the folks that we have there right now are competent enough to move forward, I think if. As long as legally, we're not, uh, falling into any compliance or anything, then we gotta take our time to make sure we put the right people in. Because we wanna, again, it's important for us to establish our relationships, and really see what a functionality is. As it relates to our, us running our business together, we wanna have the right people out speaking for us at those boards and commissions, okay? Did you have anything else, ma'am, I'll come back to you if he wanna, if he, yes, ma'am?
It's in reference to the police and fire retirement system. For the treasurer, did not we send in the paperwork to change the date for me? It currently says, uh, twelve eighteen. And they were supposed to be receiving some paperwork from city, the city. In reference to my continued serving on Police and Firemen's Pension Board.
Correct, and, um, what, what she's referring to, Madam Clerk, is, uh, we had spoke about the council.
Speak up a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, we had, we, you and I had spoken about the council appointment. They, the, uh, the pension board has requested a copy of that, you sent me a copy, but it was for her first, when she was first appointed. And they need a copy when she was reappointed, she was reappointed sometime, probably two thousand and eighteen, I think. So we just need a, they just need a copy of that, but, but from, from the city's standpoint, they did, the council did reappoint. Member Wiley, uh, to that, they reappointed her back onto that board, uh, about a year or so ago. We just need a copy of that, that, uh, resolution.
So she's good, Councilwoman Wiley is still serving in that capacity, so we're good, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then just make.
That should be, that should be twelve twenty for her, and twelve nineteen for Mister Mo.
Okay, yeah, and just looking at, actually, no, Mister Moeller told me that I needed to reappoint. Right.
His current term expires twelve nineteen, and I, he was reappointed two years ago, and his term is expiring this month, twelve nineteen.
Let's have a meeting with him, bring him into the office. I know that we had talked to him about the, uh, building that he owns at, uh, on the Heatherwood property, and he was looking to meet with me anyway. I wanted to make sure we talked to him, okay, um, as it relates to the other, um, Councilwoman Wiley, she, she brought up a really good point, make sure we're going through these. It's like under parks, rec, youth, eighteen's.
Well, I leave them there because, so you'll know what you need to appoint.
So all of these are expired?
All those are expired, so you'll know.
All the parks and recs are expired, but we did just reappoint somebody in District Six, is this the U? Okay, so we still, we definitely need to do that, guys. We should, each one of us should have a designated for the youth commission, okay, so let's come up with one. I'm looking forward to seeing what we come up with, so we can activate them. You got an age limit on it?
I don't know, because, um.
Okay. We gonna work it out. Do you have any suggestions, uh, Al, as it relates to the, the age cap on the youth commission, for Parks and Rec? Okay, then what we'll do is, let's look at what general practice is across the country, and then come back to us with that, with that information, okay? Make sure you email everybody on that, and then that way we can make appointments, okay, did you have anything else?
Nope, I forward you guys to email right now, so I can say good advice.
Perfect, I did get that, yeah, that's one of my guys too, I like that. Councilwoman Washington?
It's not working.
Oh, okay, I would like to record, uh, make a recommendation to reappoint Ruthie Williams to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Support, been moved and supported, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Alright. Eyes have it, motion carries, go ahead.
And I also have a, um, person that's interested in the housing development. So I'll have the application, and I'll, get the, I'm sorry, I got the resume, and I'll do the application.
Good, and have it forwarded to Felicia. Okay, and then we'll come back, when we get back to first, uh, meeting, we'll figure out special meeting, and then we'll have, you know, those interviews. Ma'am, I'm sorry, did you, were you, I'm sorry, are you done, Councilwoman Washington? Okay, uh, yield, Councilwoman Wiley?
Just, uh, one point of clarity, each of these, uh, commissions, boards and commissions. When they, uh, meet, or when they don't meet, is supposed to submit to the clerk that we met, or we didn't meet. And to give minutes, so that's another way of us keeping up with these people. If they're expired, or if they're even attending, or if they just were on here in name only.
Right.
So, we need to reiterate to each of these commissions, and maybe even send a letter to them stating that, you know. Cause they're supposed to send their dates of, uh, to her at the beginning of the year, because she posts this.
Okay.
Uh, for people to know, because all these are open meetings.
Right.
And, uh, it might be a good idea for them to know that they're supposed to send her something after every meeting. So I guess that goes to whoever the chair is, or whoever the, uh, person in charge of this, if they haven't chosen one. But still, she's supposed to be aware of all of this, so she doesn't have to go back through.
Right.
And.
Makes sense. So let's do a letter, uh, city clerk from, from, from us, put it on my letterhead, CC all of us. On it, and then send it out to each chairperson. Um, and then I'm assuming each board should have a secretary or a person that works with them. And then also CC our city planner, cause I know that the city planner works.
They have been, just so you know, they have been compliant.
Okay. No, I'm okay with that, good, if everybody's satisfied with that, let's move along, um. I would like to appoint, uh, Courtney Owens to the Compensation Board. It's been moved and supported, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Eyes have it, motion carries, alright then, let's move right along, update the current list of appointments, okay, previous business. Ordinances, first reading, second reading, new business, city clerk?
Consideration and approval authorizing the DPS to accept the proposal from Alfred Venetian Company. To develop the city's plan for compliance to the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, lead and copper rule requirements. This, these amount, the amount of the proposal is not to exceed thirty-six thousand.
The mood is supportive, discussion? Jerome, just explain to the public as it relates to what it is that we're talking about doing here. Yeah, please, stand, stand right there, that way they can hear you, usually. Yeah, the man voice.
In orientation, we failed on our land and copper test this year by one house. We tested thirty-four fails, which was within a ninety percent percentile. Which puts us off the threshold of fifteen parts per billion, puts us at seventeen parts per billion. What we did at the state call, that they, what they called the action level, so they required the city to do certain steps to the secret. And the steps is before council, and I, that's for me to give. My inventory is there for this thing by January first of twenty twenty, until we begin, to put a bid together to go out. Cause we have to replace, we are required at a minimum to replace seventy percent of our lead services for the next several years. So I have that list formulated, we have four hundred and thirty-five homes, that we have identified to have actual lead service that we will have to attract. So, I have before this body tonight, to ask them to approve this thirty-six thousand dollars to allow my engine firm. Our engine firm to work with me to get this process done, as we continue to work with the state.
Alright, hearing that, guys, any questions or comments you wanna add? Can I have a motion? To it? Okay. Alright, so there's a motion, and we have support, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Eyes have it, motion carries.
Item B is consideration and approval of an offer to purchase one vacant residential lot, which is located on the south side of Oakwood. Between Avondale and Glenwood, and is legally described as duly noted, in the amount of five hundred dollars to Tonis Buckley.
So move Mr. Chair. Mood is supported, any discussion? So is this a lot of buildable lot, or? Is not buildable lot, okay, Sarday, I'm sorry, state your name, please, and speak to the audience, please.
Sarday Fleming, uh, the lot is not buildable, it is a nation to the applicants, current home that they occupy. They are paid from active water, it will be part of the deed, um, and they would like to invest the initial lot that yard should have earned.
So we are, property that's adjacent to your home, can actually be, is it like a process or something that? This person had to go through, or they just came in and just said, hey, I wanna buy this property, and what happened, how's the process work?
It's the same process for residential and commercial, purchases of land, submit an application. However, you purchase a residential lot, you need to apply, we will, uh, make sure you're updating your taxes, whatever, um. Property you may have interest in, the city already making sure that you're already a, um, a positive land owner in the city. So it's have light, they can, the company that's working with multiple purchasing initial land. I put this individual with update all the buildings, and you will place an application, if the city multiple land to purchase it. And if it's buildable or buildable, it depends on the price point, um, and it comes before council, council agrees or disagrees with the purchase. And then, uh, I can design and profit as necessary.
Is the applicant here tonight?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Is there any other question? Hearing none, is a motion on the floor, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Eyes have it, motion carries, alright, public participation, uh, we would ask that you approach the mic. Even though it's not working, please speak up as loudly as you can, you have three minutes, and let's do three minutes in respect to everyone. Understanding that, uh, now, I'll call your name, I'll, I'll call your name. Like, what is your name, I'll call you first. I, I, understanding too, that, um, I just, understanding too, that not only is this public participation time. But we also hear from the diocese as well, so each one of us get time, so we just wanna be mindful of that, we have quite a bit, um. As it relates to public participation for tonight, alright? So clerk, I have us on a timer, when you hear the sound. Be respectful, and then we move forward, Chantel Wesley? Chantel Wesley? Alright. Good, alright, perfect.
Hello, council. I'm Chantel Wesley with Inkster Reader, I just wanted to announce to the community some changes that we were doing. The, um, print publication wasn't adequately meeting the needs. Of the city as far as getting the information out fast enough, so, we're gonna be doing a podcast weekly now, kinda like a newscast. Um, every Tuesday, first one's starting tomorrow, and, uh, if anybody wanna share information. About anything going around in the city, you can let me know, and we can get that on the podcast, that way we can try to reach more people.
Where, where will it be held?
I'mma post it on, um, I want to announce that, I'mma post it on YouTube. And share it to the Inkster Reader website, which is inksterreader dot home dot blog.
And how do a person, how does a person get information, or come on to the show?
Um, this, that's what I was gonna say, the easiest way is to join our notification, so you get a text notification. With the link, and you just click it, if you're on social media, you will see it, when it's posted, but if you're not on social media. You can join, um, our text notification, you just, um, text INC NEWS, I-N-K, N-E-W-S. To eight four four, two two four, seven five six two.
Repeat that one more time.
You text INC NEWS, I-N-K, N-E-W-S, to eight four four, two two four. Seven five six two. And every time there's a new podcast, or any major city announcements, or any information we wanna get out, tech, via text to the community. You will just have a link, you click it, it goes straight to the YouTube video, and you'll be able to see the up-to-date podcast. Yeah, one eight, it's a one eight four four. One, it's eight four four, two two four, seven five six two.
It's the actual phone number.
Mm-hmm, you text Inc, so, I wanna give out my personal number too, if you guys have got any other questions. Seven three four, four four four, three zero two one.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. Please, sir.
Let me give you a bit of time.
Oh, she gave me a mission, okay. Councilman Chisholm?
This Wesley, I was just gonna ask, I know, uh, in different passes, especially with you all being newest starting up. Requested from the different, uh, yes, you can say political offices for their media departments to add you to their, uh, media release contact list.
Mm-hmm, yes, that was. Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry.
We know that works.
I didn't know what that was. Yeah, that'll be fine.
No, I said have.
Oh, no, I don't know any, I thought you were asking, no.
I'm asking, have you done that yet, because you can, um, just, uh, I guess, inside, you could request from like the state level, the county level. To those different elected officials, the information and the different events they're having, or when they do like press releases and stuff. You can ask for them to have you placed on their media release contact.
Thank you.
That way, when the media department, say, Wayne County Commissioner Glenn Anderson has something. Media department sends out a press release.
Okay.
You're on the email list, and then that way you'll get that particular update, and if.
Thank you. Alright, thank you very much.
Um, just, oh.
Question, ma'am? Yeah, please.
Um, also, he spoke of, uh, Commissioner Anderson, he puts out a newsletter every, every month. And today, in his newsletter, he was asking for local information. So, if you tell him what you're doing and send him the information, he may be able to put that out with his newsletter.
Okay, I, um, I don't have anything that I'm doing, except sharing what you guys are doing, so. Except you guys, you know, everyone in the community shares with me, the things at the organizations, public officials, any city news. I just wanna communicate, help communicate whatever, I'm not doing anything except communicating, that's what I'm saying.
But I'm saying, all of that information you're communicating can be.
Included with his, uh, what's his, Anderson, this was the guy, Lance?
Wayne County, no, he's not Lance, he's a Wayne County Commissioner.
Okay.
Miss McClendon right there can assist you with that.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Thank you. Mandela Dixon?
Um, I don't even know where to start, I don't wanna start from the beginning.
Speak up, speak up.
I said, I don't know where to start from, I don't wanna really start from the beginning, I wanna talk about my house, um, I live in Inkster Housing. And I've been having some issues, I came here, um, August, and tried to get some sit- situated. And maintenance comes, and they have fixed stuff, I'm the one with the apartment with the feces coming from the bathroom upstairs. To my kitchen and the living room, I have a ten-year-old, CPS is unhappy with me. I've been trying to get help from CPS, from the doctor's office, from the F I, the DHS office. And all they keep telling me is not, I'm not on Inkster Housing, um, I'm not on their head. Inkster Housing will come and fix stuff to, to keep people quiet, or whatever. Um, I'm having to, I'm, I'm stressing, I'm seven months pregnant with a little girl, I have a ten-year-old, and I live in Canterbury's. My heat barely works, someone is there right now ripping the ceiling open, because they keep caulking up and covering up the problem. I turned in videos, I wrote a three-page statement to Miss Ca- Mister Carter. And Miss Morris, um, today, or whatever, it's like I'm screaming out for help, and no one is listening. I got told this morning at eight twenty, that my house is still unfit, and I will not be, be able to bring my baby girl home. At this point right now, I really don't know what to do, and no shelters is gonna be open into March. I am seven months pregnant, and my C-section is due in February. I'm coming to a stage where my, my frustration is turning into anger, I'm not, I'm not being heard. Um, I got a handwritten eviction notice today, because I guess maintenance told Paul that, um. Um, I got a handwritten eviction notice today because I guess maintenance told Paul that, um, they not being able to be let in. Ms. Nelson is my caseworker, is on paperwork, it been on paperwork since August that they have permission to come in when I'm not there or I'm upstairs, I'm high risk or whatever. So this shouldn't be no excuse. I'm starting to feel now that I'm speaking up, I've been quiet for so long that I, I, I'm, I'm getting evicted for, for, for speaking up and, and turning in stuff. I'm to a point right now where I'm getting scared. I have a ten-year-old boy and I'm pregnant with a little girl. I turned in a transfer June the sixteenth to Miss Paris Jones. I turned another transfer to get moved out my apartment to somewhere else today. And I got told by Mister Paul that I ain't getting no transfer no time soon. They're gonna fix it. To be honest, I don't have time to wait. My baby can come at any time right now. Where would I go? The three-page, the three-page statement, that's mine.
Okay. Um, yeah, yes, sir. Councilboard, Councilman. Councilman Williams. Um. Evicted you out of here?
Um, he, he's saying this is gonna be discarded if I let maintenance in. I have to be off the criticism notice to quit. Um, January, you must move by January the sixteenth. I called Paul this morning on his cell phone. He came over. The maintenance, I don't know if they still in my house, but they was when I left to come here. They ripping open my ceiling. My heat got my, my heater, my heat don't work, so Inkster Housing last year gave me two space heaters. Them out. It's like it's, I'm still having the same problem from when I came and talked to y'all.
My question to you is, why is he convicted?
Want to read this? I don't know. He said he re, he, he said he re, he's evicted me because I'm not letting maintenance in and that's the story. Maintenance ain't coming. They don't come. I, Ms. Nelson, it's on paperwork that I'm saying that they can come in without my permission. They, they not coming. I got, this is a hand, this is a notice to quit. I got this today. I'm still, I feel that I got this because I've been quiet so long. But when you talk about kids ain't coming home and, and taking people's kids away, it, 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 it get tense. I, I don't sit around and do nothing. I went to school my whole pregnancy. I, I then came to CNA. I've been a direct care worker since two thousand and thirteen. I, I, it is enough is enough. I'm screaming out for help and my DHS worker, she pay my, my, my lights and gas, but end up telling my doctors that my house is unfit and I can't bring my baby home. Like, this, this stuff not right.
Okay. Yes, sir. Go ahead, continue, sir. I, I think. The commissioning meet tomorrow, right? Does the commission meet tomorrow? What time they meet tomorrow, Paul? Okay. Hold on one second. We're gonna do everything decently in order of respect for what we're doing because my thing is we're gonna solve the issue. We'll get down to it. So let's figure it out. Hold on one second. You had another comment, sir? No, that's. Did you have a comment, Mayor Proton? Okay, alright then. So we know tomorrow is, have you been before the resident council?
Uh, uh, I only can, I only come here, I don't.
So your resident council, Ms. Carter, where are you, Ms. Carter? Mister Carter?
Mister Carter, left.
Yeah, I about said he told me. Told Ms. Morris.
Ms. Morris, stand up, I'm sorry. You said what? Speak, speak up so we can hear you. I'm sorry.
And Councilman Williams, it does state that she refused to let maintenance in to do the required repairs per the lease. So now she got a eviction notice.
Alright. Go, go ahead. You said she's been before you?
Yes.
With this issue?
Yes.
Okay.
She came today and she spoke with, um, Mister Carter.
Okay.
And, uh, he instantly, um, telephoned me, but I did get a chance to see all the, the documents and see the pictures. Um, we have had, um, numerous, um, complaints from management saying that she will not let them in when they came to try to get in to fix anything that needed to be repaired or, um, if it wasn't, she wasn't there, but no, the person was in the house occupying, they wouldn't open the door either. But as, um, um, we, they are, like I said, they are trying to fix it at this point, but it's been like this for a good while. A long time.
Two years, going on two years. The problems is getting worser and worser. And then when, when I put on paper that they can come.
Okay.
That when I come and, and tell them they can come in, he, he makes a, a, he gives me a letter and he says that they can't get in. I called this number and the number on the eviction notice and it's not in service. You can't call for, for maintenance. You have to leave a message when you call Inkster Housing, like, we're, we're, we've been in north, we're, we're not being heard. I, I, you can transfer, you transfer me to Canterbury's, transfer me somewhere else so I can bring my, I keep my babies and bring them home. It's gonna get ugly, they get took. I ain't unfit. I didn't call unfit. My CPS, they all him, like, it's getting out of control.
So what Ms. Dixon is speaking about is calling, they have a system that you have to call and each, um, each complex has a number. So.
Ms. Nelson don't answer.
I know, hold on, let me finish. So when you call in and you get that number, you put in your number, you put in your work order. Now, and Paul knows that I'm getting ready to say this is the truth. They do not get to all the work orders that come through the, ah, be quiet for one second, Ms. Dixon. They do not get to all the work orders. It does take them numerous times. Okay, yes, I know that they're under staff for maintenance, but, you know, we're, you have to draw the line somewhere and we, we've already established that.
When you come in and do work orders, I post a sign something when the job is done. I ain't never signed anything, never. So the jobs is not getting done or we'll be back or we'll be back the fourteenth and the fifteenth. That was Saturday and Sunday. They spinning me.
Let's do, let's do this. Let's do this, just for the, the, the sake of due process. Tomorrow, we're, it's a commissioners meeting tomorrow, right?
Yes.
At what time is that?
Six thirty.
Where's the location?
It'll be forty-five hundred Inkster Road.
Okay, so we'll be there tomorrow. Uh, the director is actually sitting on the diocese, they're correct. You sit with the other commissioners?
Yes.
So we'll be able to ask those questions there.
Six thirty.
And then we'll be able to get answers and resolutions. Before then, Paul, we'll talk, I'll call you and I'll stop by and then we'll go from there. We can figure out resolution at this point. Sound like, uh, this issue's been before this body before.
Yes.
For whatever reason, it hasn't been handled, um, you bringing it before this body now, and I believe this body wants to get it handled. I know that I'm going to do everything within my power to handle it. So we'll work with you as we work with the resident council and the commission and all to get this resolved, okay? As long as you telling me everything that you telling me.
Oh, I got, I got paperwork, I got videos, I, I got it all.
You doing everything that you supposed to do, because I'm gonna hold, Paul already know, me and him had the conversation. We about to do everything within our power to hold Inkster Housing accountable for public safety and quality of living for every resident within housing. And I understand that that's my mission and I'm on it with you, okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright, I'll see you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Uh, Ernest Hendricks. Council chamber is named after you, man, but you only got three minutes. My mentor and my protege. I'm one of your proteges, I know that, but I mean, you know.
Can I have to say, Mr. Ty?
We got three minutes, no. Three minutes, will you still, please? Sir?
First of all, let me say congratulations to all of you that have run elections. The citizens decided who they want and who they didn't want to, to serve up there. So I hope that all of you can put aside all the other stuff and the disappointments of the people that didn't win, that you wanted to win, and work for the citizens of the community. And I think you'd be coming out farther ahead on that, okay? Secondly, um, I was listening to the auditor and I'm wondering what the fund balance was, how much was it? I didn't hear him.
So, uh, he did, he didn't give a specific number. He basically said, um, we'll have the actual number with, when we get the year in audit. Um, but it's gonna be somewhere in, in the neighborhood of about one point five to one point eight was the number based on the information that we had.
You mean that this is December, they haven't got the audit yet?
No, we're, we're, uh, and I don't know if you were here during the beginning of this presentation, we're waiting a report from the actuary, uh, in order to finalize.
Okay. That, that amount that you have, is that restricted or unrestricted funds?
It's mostly unrestricted.
Unrestricted?
There are some restricted funds, but, but I would say, uh, you know, eighty-five to ninety percent of it is, is unrestricted.
So that, all of the, when I'm looking around the city and I see these sidewalks, they're two inches above that are tilt. You know, and the lawyer can tell you that if it's over two inches, you know, and you trip on it, you got a lawsuit. And I think that, you know, my good friend over here, uh, can start a sidewalk program to take care of that, right? Okay, we'll get on to that later. I know how he feels, so that's, that's alright, that's alright. That's alright, I don't, I don't need an answer, I don't need an answer. Um, okay, now, the other thing is very quickly, um, you know, they had a issue with the water bills where they, you know, the lawyer took them to court and the citizens, several citizens got credit on their bill for that, for a certain amount, okay? Then the city went to court and was sued and the court says they're gonna tax it to the taxes so that the citizens are really paying that money back that they got originally, you know, when their lawsuit was filed, so they paying that back. Uh, now, what I'd like to know, is that money going back into the water and sewer fund or is it going to the general fund?
Because that's a two-part, that's a two-part question, but, uh, council, I mean, Mayor Proton?
Okay, now, when the, when the lawsuit was put through the city, okay, the residents won. The attorneys in City of Inkster went and appealed it and we ended up winning, but Mark Stoudrider never took their credit back. So it never came back off of your bill.
That's right. I see it on the tax bills where that money is being taken.
But that money's not taken from that. It's just, and the money's taken out of your taxes.
Mr. Hendricks, you may be referring to another judgment. There was a sewer judgment, um, I believe that Jerome, was that the Wayne County?
Yeah, he, uh, he had a five, six year, eleven, twelve, that's my Wayne County.
There was an unpaid sewer charge.
Okay.
That's not the, that wasn't tied to the lawsuit for the credit that you, those are two separate, uh, legal acts.
So that, what I, what I'm seeing for the water bill and tax bill is not, that's not, that's not where it is? Okay, I needed clarification on that because, you know, you, on one hand, you were giving it, on the other hand, I'm saying they're taking it back, you know?
Right.
Now, um, also, I, I understand you just said earlier that the mics were, that the mics were not working. And they don't work on, on, uh, on the TV either.
Okay.
There's, you know, people are, you see their mouths moving, but you don't hear a word they're saying. I turned my volume all the way up to a hundred decibels and still it was just like a whisper that the pe, that you're talking. And I know some of you up here can really talk.
He's been good, he's been good, he's been good down there. But let me say this, the new, we're actually getting the new service in right now. So just for that and along with, of course, adding more mics and equipment, it's tuned about seventy thousand that came out of the, what is it?
I think.
Big one. Um, so you should be able to hear within the, you know, the next.
So I don't have to turn it up to a hundred decibel?
No, sir.
Very good. I, and I just, again, I reiterate that I hope all of you are working together and not fighting battles for people, friends, neighbors, or relatives that didn't win. But you're working for the citizens because the citizens decided who they want up here. You know, that's what it always, where it always has been. And so we want to maintain that kind of decorum, okay? Thank you. And if there's anything I can do to help, you know, uh, I'll ask my wife if I can and, and she says yes, I'll do it.
The answer is no.
Okay.
She already told us. Uh, she, she told me, she told me right off. That came out of her mouth. Thank you. Uh, Paris Jones?
Hello, everybody. The mic working for me, y'all? Okay, um, first I want to say hi to.
Be, be free and speak up.
To the mic that working.
Be free and speak up.
Alright, I got you. Alright. Uh, hello to everybody up here, mayor, council, and Inkster residents. So, um, I know everybody's like, oh, Lord, what's she about to do now? So before I actually address the issue which was briefly touched on, I want to acknowledge the community of Inkster. Because over the past seventy-two hours, we had a need and when I tell y'all, I'm getting emotional thinking about it, the need was met for a, a single mother in our city. It was bigger than the turkey giveaway, it was bigger than the, the swearing of, that many people responded to the point where this woman is going to have a permanent place to stay on Tuesday. And I especially want to thank the ministerial alliance because they showed up and showed, the ministerial alliance, they showed up and showed out. Just like the church is supposed to do. They actually were the community. Everybody got together and, like I said, blessed her. And also, I want to acknowledge the city of Inkster for all of the efforts and the works and all the activism and all of the different programs that are going on, um, within and around the city. And I also, I gotta, I gotta give a, a quick little plug. Operation Refuge is having their annual gala, uh, coming up this Saturday, where we will have an opportunity to pay tribute to one of the best mothers in the community, Mother Greenwood, um, so y'all tune in. And then, um, last but not least, there was a, a, a social media wave going on today. Uh, there was a beta test for a Inkster initiative program that, um, Newbit, which is Joe Clay Brown back here. Um, Newbit LLC is getting together to form an extended coalition of all nonprofits and profits so that we can pass along information, resources, um, you know. The queen here may have something that I may not have access to and so on and so forth. Um, by the grace of God, we were able to put something other than murder-led, uh, corruption and scandal on the news. Um, every time, it will not be covered on the news, but the news station on their own account has decided that they wanted to follow and help, you know, everybody involved. So if anybody is interested in coming to the next meeting, which will be after the new year, uh, y'all jot down this number. Uh, call three one three seven two one eight nine nine eight and you can ask for the CO, CEO himself, uh, Mister Clay Brown. Alright, and then I'mma spend my last little minute. Um, as everybody knows, I've been doing a lot of advocacy work since my, um, resignation from Inkster Housing. Um, up until today, I had no, I still don't have any issues. I operate in peace. Up until today, I had never had to endure the cold shoulders or the anything, uh, like that from Mister Bowling. Even after the protests, it was still all smiles and giggles, which, you know, usually when things like that happen, gotta be on to something and that's my opinion. Um, I have been advocating for over sixty residents, which started out as three. Um, it's some of them here in the audience still. We got some former residents that were blessed enough to get out of the situation. Um, but today they asked me to come and read this letter for them. So it's really quick and it just key points some things because it's bigger than the roaches, it's bigger than the maintenance issues. Um, it's not just the staff at Inkster Housing. These things were inherited, but as adults, we gotta go for it. We gotta take ownership and as the mayor mentioned when Ms. Dixon was talking, everybody has to be accountable. There is lost staff, the phones not getting answered. It's, it's a lot of stuff going on over there. However, communication is horrible. If you cannot communicate, then what is the point of telling me, okay, I have an inspector coming in, we gonna get this done, we gonna get this done. But then you tell me to call this person that tells me to call this person and tells me to call that person. And just so y'all know, again, I was a former employee, so I know that the job task is hard for everybody that is still there. Um, you gotta do everything, everything under the sun. Um, however, this is what I was asked to read. Um, this is from, this is from the sixty residents that I'm speaking with, okay? Um, some of the issues that are taking place are extreme infestation. Every site, um, does not have each, but bedbugs, roaches, and rats are something that's being dealt with from the regular community to our senior citizens. Um, there was a monthly extermination process that took place in a wave, which has, over the past several months, been canceled approximately around May. Children have had roaches crawl in their diapers, in their cereal, in their ears. Mothers cannot sleep at night. A suspicious substance, which as Inkster Housing calls it, which is black mold, because you can smell it on ourselves. You can smell it on our children, you can smell it on our clothes. The smell is so bad that sometimes you can smell it in the air. Inkster Housing has done several inspections, however, they all come up, no substance found. However, there are several residents that actually had to pay their hard, hard-earned money to get these tests ran and guess what? Mold was found. Incomplete work orders, which we can understand because. Incomplete work orders, which we can understand because there is not a lot of staff there, however, things should not be done incorrectly, and it should not take a call from the city for fire to come to put a Band-Aid on the issue that has been existent before the current administer, administration. Tents have to wait weeks, months, and sometimes years for appliances that have to be ordered, as well as electrical problems, and most importantly, there's a high vacancy rate at Inglewood Housing Commission, however, for some odd reason, there has not been one resident moved again unless there is some type of upper management call-in. For example, there is a family that has six people living in a three-bedroom, they have been promised a transfer and still have not been given it, they're being told to call one person, that person is telling them to call someone else, and as an employee, um, that's not how the process works unless something has changed since I've left. Um, also, there are some inspections going on this week that residents have been informed of, but I have over twenty-five people that are telling me these inspections consist of somebody walking in the door, looking to the left, looking to the right, and then leaving. They also have incorrect developments on these lists, a Lamone Gardens resident got a parkside inspection, and they passed, and I know for a fact, that unit ain't right. So at this point, um, again, I know that you guys are diligently working on it, I know that there has been meetings, meetings with Mr. Bolinger, I do acknowledge the fact that he inherited something as a former employee, it was days that I wanted to run out of there, and I chose to resign because my morals, my morals wouldn't let me continue to go there when I know we can at least communicate with the residents. So I'm asking, in addition to everything that's being done, can the commissioners and the city as a whole not only support these residents, but ask that management communicates effectively? Thank y'all.
C Porter, C Porter?
Uh, good evening, mayor and all councilmen, I, first of all, I am C Porter, and I would like to apologize, first off, for being, um, ignorant to how the process went to put in the paperwork, and I don't mind calling myself ignorant because I know the definition of ignorant just means to not know, okay?
You're fine, C Porter, excuse me.
Now, I just had a question for, I believe it's Jerome Bivens, I think this goes to you.
Yep, please.
Um, as far as the homes, you said, four hundred and something homes in Inglewood have been tested for lead, am I correct on that? That wasn't you?
I didn't say four hundred, all for testing, we have determined that we have four hundred and thirty-five homes in the city that have lead service.
And that was because they were tested?
No, we did inventory of all the waters, um, actually in the city of Inglewood, on the taps, you could excuse me, you had a house filled, and a line was hooked up to the house, it was hooked up to the city, and based on that finding, we found out four hundred and thirty-five homes in this city that have lead service.
That means lead issues?
Yeah.
Okay.
Why don't you explain what lead service is, Jerome?
Lead service is the pipe that goes from our connection to your house, inside your house to the lead. Doesn't affect the water, water's fine, it's the pipe and service that's being changed.
Okay, so.
It doesn't have anything to the water, those four hundred and thirty-five homes, it's in the next year, starting injection, we're gonna put out a bid to get those homes on the list to start getting to replace those services at seven percent per year or more, whichever, if our rent allows us to do more than seven percent, it's seven percent is the minimum that we can do for the next fourteen years to come and comply with this thing, drinking water.
Seven percent of the four hundred?
Yeah, that's thirty-one homes a year.
So that's the four hundred homes, just in Inglewood period?
Yeah.
What about the rest of the homes?
Those are, those are the homes that we have identified that have lead service.
And that, does that include housing? Because I know those are buildings are very old too.
I can set to ice, I can just, I can inventory this, uh, I have to take a look at it.
Okay.
I'll have to look at it and see what the dollars are.
Okay, I accept that, thank you. And then I just have one other thing, or maybe two, but on behalf of the young lady right here, who just spoke about, they couldn't come in and do any work because she had on her work order that, do not enter, I just want to state that I have that on my work orders, do not enter my home when I'm not there. Every time I come, somebody's in my place, so I don't understand why they couldn't get in hers.
She gave the permission, it's on paper, they can't enter. She's just making them excuse themselves.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I heard you say that, they said, that she said, do not enter.
They have permission.
Okay, so in other words, she has permission to enter, but someone is saying they cannot enter, I know they can enter because they have keys, they're in my place all the time when I'm not there, and I don't want them there when I'm not there. And then, uh, one last thing that I would like to say, and this is really emotional for me, because I care about these people that's living out here in housing, and a lot, the roach infestation that's going on, these families are moving into this, they're not moving in, bringing this roach stuff, and I'm saying this because I experienced it, and I, I don't think it's right or fair for these families with children to move into a festation, unbelonged to them, because when they come in and do their walkthrough, and it's clean, freshly painted, smells good, looks good, yeah, yeah, no roaches are coming out at that time, but when you come back, like, these people probably moved right in that day, I didn't do that, thank goodness, I moved in a day later because when I went back that night and flicked on the light, they were everywhere, but prior to that, I was there four hours in that unit, measuring windows and all that to put stuff up to my windows, did not one roach come out? And if I had to just stayed there, moved in that day, like I really wanted to, because I was so thankful to have a place, I was gonna make me a pallet on the floor and lay there and sleep there that night, but since I didn't have nothing to my windows, I didn't, and I'm so thankful, I'm so thankful that I did not do that, because I wouldn't be here standing here to talk to you up today if I spent the night there and then roaches came out on me like that. So I feel, honestly feel for these people, because they're not moving, they moved into that situation, and I think it's very unfair, these places should be up to code and ready, no roach activity at all, because you got children and babies, like she said, roaches in babies' diapers? This is unreal.
Will you be at the commission meeting?
I will definitely be there tomorrow.
We'll see you there tomorrow.
You will definitely see me.
Thank you, Ms. Porter.
That's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Uh, you're my partner? Evening.
My citizens of Inglewood, I have three things to say really quick, well, first of all, I'm gonna do the good news before I do the bad, so the good news is, I want to thank everyone who has already participated and gave a donation for our annual holiday celebration that will be on, um, Friday, this Friday, December twentieth, from four to eight at the Floyd B Simmons Center. Um, we have still, I have not made my goal, I'm not gonna cry about it because I know God still makes a way, I still have, uh, girls that I haven't bought for our nine-year-olds, ten, eleven, and twelve, but my main thing is my teens, I'm still trying to gather up gift cards for them. Uh, I know people say, well, you shouldn't be choicy about the amount, well, I said if I could probably get someone to donate twenty-five dollars per card, that's great, because, I mean, let's be realistic, how can, how much can you buy, you can't even buy a pair of pants, and usually that's what they do, they buy clothes with the gift cards, they come back and show me, they so, they be so, they're so excited, so, I mean, twenty-five dollars, I don't feel like that's a lot, I had twenty-eight kids at first, I'm sorry.
How many gift cards are you looking to get?
Uh, that's what I'm gonna say, I had twenty-eight kids, I'm down to, well, when I wrote this, I was down to twenty-two kids I still needed to get, but I, Officer Lebo, Kylie decided that she would give me three more, so I'm down to nineteen, I still need nineteen gift cards to, to try to get purchased before Friday.
And I have twenty hundred dollar gift cards for you.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you so much. Thank you.
I'll bring them over there to you tomorrow.
Alright, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
The next thing is, I don't know if she's still here, yes she is, for the Inglewood citizens, uh, who care, and Ms. Ruthie Williams, she was a li, a blessing for our kids, they gave coats to our children who were without coats for this winter, um, we had maybe two or three of them that missed it, but the majority of them were so excited and so happy, and it's the citizens who care, and please, we, we thank you, we thank you. My last but not least, and I know I'm almost stupid, and I want to let everyone know, that everyone who gave something will get a very special, special recognition next month in twenty twenty from, um, the Inglewood Housing Resident Council. Now, the next thing I want to say is, we've been protesting and doing some of everything to try to get, um, how can I put this, to let them know that there's problems, um, I don't blame anybody for the problems, and I know that some of them, some of the problems are the residents, some of, we do have some residents that don't do what they're supposed to do, but when you look at it, like, even for the Christmas party, I don't do it for the mom and dad, because I, I do it for the children, and that's where we're at now, a child living in unsafe and unsanitary conditions, having to go, mom have to shake out her clothes, their clothes before they go to school, and, you know, there's a lot of problems, a lot of, lot, a lot of problems, okay, yes, some of them are being addressed, I'm not gonna say that they're not all being addressed, but there's some that still needs to be addressed, and we need to take, take care of it, this is just not an Inglewood Housing issue, when you look at it, when we on the news, they don't say Inglewood Housing, they say Inglewood, you know, and, you know, if we don't try to figure out and stick together, that means commissioners, executive director, the citizens, I mean, we have to try to stick together, we don't stick together to make it better, because I'm afraid this watch, they, someone told me to watch the news tomorrow at six o'clock, they said they're gonna be running a special on Channel Seven, but they weren't telling me what was it about, I was like, wait a minute, let me know what at least it's about, but they couldn't even, couldn't even tell me what it was about, they said, well, it's something about Inglewood, I'm like, okay, I don't want to hear anything else, so I'm praying that it was good, thank you, it was a day, because they got, they, they had the days mixed up, but, I mean, I'm tired of seeing, I tell them all the time, I'm tired, and I know you guys are tired of seeing Inglewood Housing in the news, just as much as we are.
I believe that, we gonna work it out.
Yeah, so, and I, and I'm, I'm at, uh, every commissioner meeting, so that's nothing new, okay, I just want one thing, please don't have the police escort me out this time, okay?
You got an order though. Gabe Henderson?
Good morning, family, good morning, family, you know, I was first, I'm getting the longer teeth, the shorter memory and all, but it was a news broadcast on Channel Seven, talking about a very positive, uh, situation that's happened in Inglewood, some young fellows that might have been a little bit bad when it was boys and all, but they come back and said, we gonna really try to, uh, do some great things for the city of Inglewood, I think Cup and a few other people, but they, it was on Channel Seven News, positive news, okay, and I'm glad, you know, well, anyway, uh, Inglewood Goodfellows, you know, we had our paper drive last year, uh, we did not do as well as we wanted to, but we tried hard and did as well as we could, we want to thank all the people who helped us along, we were able to give more families, uh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, oh, my apologies, no, anyway.
To the Inglewood Goodfellows, Tony and my mother are here, I want to thank the city of Inglewood for helping us, we still have some money that we need to pay back, I reached my goal, my goal was ten thousand dollars, we reached that, but I was not expecting five hundred and fifty kids, and that's, I'm used to two hundred, two fifty, when I went over to applications, I said, oh my lord, so then I started calling businesses, and I had businesses come to our rescue, I want to thank the Inglewood Chamber of Commerce, Midwest Realty, and every other business that helped us raise the ten, and the special person that we owe some money to, to that person as well, anybody that wants to donate to us can still donate to us to help pay the person back that we owe two thousand dollars to. I am so happy that we were able to service everyone, I had called some people, and I told them just to hold up, I will take care of you, and I have what I promised them, nobody received anything under twenty-five dollars, just add that up for five hundred and fifty kids, okay? And I tried to give so much to families, and, uh, I appreciate, uh, Reverend Williams, and to the families that were very large, and we gave our large families, we at least gave them a hundred dollars for our large families, and that was five and up, and I didn't realize we had so many families that was five and up, we had a lot of them, but I am so happy that the Goodfellows achieved what we needed to achieve, I was just a little disappointed in the police, they weren't there to help me with my papers this year, but I know next year they gonna be there and all that, I'm so happy, the fire department came to our rescue, helped us out this year, looking for them next year, so thankful to Al, the recreation department, everybody up there, our council, our mayor, I'm so happy for the donations that he gave us as well, everybody up there donated, and I am so thankful, and our citizens, I even ran into people at the bank that gave me some money, and I appreciate that too, and our churches, I appreciate that too, and I especially want to thank one mission, I don't know nothing about the Cash App, but I'm learning about the Cash App, but our churches are helping us out too, and I'm looking to raise, listen to me, I'm looking to raise over thirty thousand dollars next year to service everybody, any kid, I want to give them at least fifty dollars for each kid, so I need thirty thousand dollars, and we gonna be starting it, say, surgery in January, February, we'll be starting trying to raise money for the Goodfellows, thank you. Papers, we got papers over there, we have papers over there.
Can I, can I get my three minutes there?
No, 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 I'm gonna say this.
No, no, that was over three.
No, no, I, no, I'm just messing with you.
But you know, you know, like I said, what, uh, what, two thousand fifty years ago, no, 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 two thousand, okay, wait, the old.
What are y'all doing now, y'all out of order?
We had an order, the trees, the trees.
The trees, yeah.
Walmart has donated trees, and we are giving the trees, they were for us, but we didn't get them in time enough for Saturday to give them out, we are giving the trees to the Inglewood Legends, the, the Goodfellows are donating the Christmas trees to the Inglewood Legends, and the Inglewood Legends need help on tomorrow at two o'clock at Kroger's to put their baskets together.
And we don't know how many, because I gotta say, the OG, the original Goodfella, you know, OGF, two thousand five hundred years ago, Matthew, Mark, Luke and John told you about the real original Goodfellows, everybody know what I'm talking about.
That's right.
His purpose and all that, we talk about, he walked on water, you know, he took wine, uh, water, but the most important thing he want us to do is love one another, that is the miracle.
That's right.
With that in everybody's heart, if you had two fish, you got a fish to spare.
That's right.
You have a little water, but so, so we got to continue with the, the original, the OGF, original Goodfella, Matthew, Mark, and Luke and John told us about, do that, and with that, the possibilities of clearing up all this mess and things going on, we can do it, but that what, denominated, common denominated, love, then you got to respect one another.
Yes, sir.
We can do it, we can do it, it's easy to do, it's easy to do, well, anyway, and I'm, I'm sorry.
Hey, I let those reports, I let those reports go on all day, what you can't say?
Unification, no, no, I gotta say this, it was an eighty-nine, eighty-nine year old woman.
Are you gonna be out of order?
Eighty-nine year old woman.
Henderson, are you gonna be out of order now?
I have to say about this little old lady, she happened to bend down and picking up trash, you know. She happened to bend down and picking up trash, you know, uh, you know, a waste that, I got her name, I'm gonna say her name. Her name was Mrs., I'm in beautification too. Her name was Iris McFaul. She was 89 years, that woman right at uh Walgreen. I say, I got to say something about, you know, some people want to clean up and all, but she was 89. I had to say, her name is Iris McFaul. I'm gone.
Well, I needed Davis, Ms. Davis. All right. That's my guy, I can't.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening, good evening.
Counsel and audience. I would like to give a shout out to Mr. Jerome Bivins. A big shout out to Mr. Bivins. I am a volunteer directional engineer in the lobby. And you understand when I say engineer, so don't start looking funny. But in the lobby and the doors are open constantly and cold air is coming in that lobby all the time. And I sit right in front of the lobby. Mr. Bivins had pity on me. He did something that was very nice to help me to stay warm. And I will never forget that, how kind Mr. Bivins was to me. I also would like to say one more thing about the uh boards of commissioners. When they enter the building, don't they take attendance of record of who's there? When they come in? Aren't they accountable for what they do and who comes into the meeting? They should take attendance each time they come into meeting. So you'll know if they have been there. If their name is just on the record, but you want to see accountability, their names counted on a piece of paper, whoever is in charge of the board. So Mr. Bivins, you done a great job for me. And you all stop picking on him too.
He got one of those type of jobs. He got one of those type of jobs, would never stop doing that. Will Miller? Will Miller? He got one of those type of jobs, would never stop doing that. He picked on for life.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening.
Mayor.
Good evening.
President family.
Uh, my name is Will Miller. Uh, I came up to uh ask just a couple of questions. Um, one you addressed earlier, what had to do with the audit. I am more than glad to hear that y'all putting together a commission, uh finance board again, uh, a subcommittee for finances in the city. Um, that's something that was, that we had before. Why it wasn't there anymore, I wasn't quite sure. But after that audit, I'm alarmed a little bit. So um, I'd like, I'm glad to see that that's gonna um becoming a part of y'all, um, the, part of y'all work. Um, also, it was fully here, I know, I've been coming for a while, it seemed like your shorts and chairs. I don't know what happened to them chairs, if I could find them chairs. That would be real nice. Um, with regard to housing. Um, housing is something that's been going on, we've been having, housing's been making the news and it's been going around the community for a little while now. Um, I make no bones, it's something that I've, it's a board that I'm trying to set on actively. I want to try and do some work with it instead of protesting it and other uh um roles that I got inside the city. I'd like to work, sit on it and work and do some work with the people I've been working with, you know, with the, with the resident council, with the residents, with former folks. Something's got to get done at this particular point. It's starting to get really bad. Y'all as a board have more of a sledgehammer work that you can do with count, with, with housing. So we got to try and get to the point where we got people who gonna dedicate themselves to housing, be in-housy, working with people in-housing on the ground. At this point now, you got to be on the ground, talking to people, count vacancies, talking to folks, talking to maintenance, talking to re- re- talking to residents, talking to everybody, talking with Paul. Something got to get done. That is, that is really getting to the point where it's, it's starting to become, you know, I, you know, beyond a ISO, beyond, beyond lapse that wouldn't have been on the news three, four times for, you know. It's enough. And people's coming to the point now where they feel like they have no choice. They coming to, to y'all crying because they feel they don't have any other choices. That's something we got to work past. So I'm hoping that we can work with that. I'm gonna be at the meeting on Tuesday, I, I am. Uh, other than that, ah, that's it. I appreciate y'all so much. Have a good.
All right. Mr. Moore?
Evening, uh, Councilman.
Speak up, Mr. Moore, if you don't mind, please.
Hey, uh, I was concerned about everybody up there counting, I hear Shaw and everybody trying to count the city's money and how we owed and all that stuff. And the guy from Plant Moran never said nothing about those two CSOs that Inkster's paying for. We got two CSO's here, Inkster stuck with paying for. What are they, what good are they doing for us? If they, he didn't say nothing about they draining our water, doing nothing like that. We got two mega million dollar CSO's. And we got to pay for them. They on our tax bill every, every time we look up. They on our tax bill. And Plant Moran never said nothing about them. That's money that we got to pay the city. Uh, I also wanted to address the water issue. I am a water fanatic. Water is extremely important. It's more than you can meet eye, more than meet eye. Our kids, I've been in Flint for four years, helping them with their water. And I was appalled by a guy saying, this ain't none of Flint. No, it's not Flint, this is Inkster. And you ain't gonna make it like no Flint.
That's right.
Because you gonna get in here and see about this water like you supposed to.
That's right.
Uh, I looked at a list, I showed the, the mayor a list the other week of how, of different communities. They had a list of communities down the list, they had water, uh, five, six parts per billion. Inkster seventeen parts per billion. And why Inkster got so much? And why we don't do nothing about it? The Plant Moran guy, he mentioned the fact that uh, hey, you can do something else here with the water fund and all that stuff to try and get this done sooner. You need to get it done sooner. In Flint, these kids drinking that water and stuff, they got uh, they retarded. They messing up their brain. The pregnant women don't supposed to be drinking that water. They don't supposed to be bathing their kids in that water. Washington asked that question, she didn't get a plausible answer. You don't supposed to be bathing your kids in that. Snyder gave a, did a study. And he said, the kids can't read at a third grade level. Why is that? Because it's lead. They got all kind of anxiety attacks and all kind of stuff from their lead in the water. We need to get it out and help our kids. Uh, another thing I wanted to address is that uh, I'm glad we got us another mayor here or some, I don't know, we really needed another mayor. It seems as though that uh, the uh, city attorney should take that uh, our uh, and give it to everybody up there and give it to our mayor and have our mayor to read our charter. And explains that that mayor is responsible for everything that happens in Inkster. He responsible. You don't believe it, look what happened in Detroit. I hear people talk about giving out contracts and doing various thing. You can't give out no, the mayor supposed to do that. They had people in Detroit giving out contracts and doing stuff like that. What do they do? Soon as the feds come in, they say, hey, uh, I want to retire and try to get my little pension. What happened? Kwame Kilpatrick got 28 years, Mr. Mayor. Did you know that? He got 28 years for the uh, the dog catcher and everybody else doing this and doing that, all kind of junk. And the uh, Parks and Rec and the DPW and the uh clerk doing all kind of thing. Tell him, Mr. Attorney, he's responsible, he's the one gonna pay. He's the one gonna suffer for it. And uh, I think Inkster got a good chance to get on the right track. I think Inkster got a good, and I hate to see you on that federal pin up there with Kwame Kilpatrick.
Oh, I ain't gonna be there.
So you should get on the ball and get with your city attorney here and let him advise you and tell you, you are responsible for everything. You supposed to do everything in this city. We voted for a strong mayor. And our new charter gives you the power. And it makes you responsible.
I understand.
Thanks a lot.
Yes, sir. All right. Officer Lebo? Hey, I heard it. I, I need no whoopings right now. Hey, officer.
Hi, good mor- good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I just wanted to take a minute to come on up here and say hello. Um, as many of you know, I was off on maternity leave, so I was off uh during the election. And so it's my first time addressing you all as a body and want to say congratulations on your respective campaigns. And I look forward to working with you all, um, to all the citizens. Uh, thank you all for your support and well wishes while I was off as well now that I'm returned. And it's just, it's really good to be back, that's all. Um, I also did want to say that last week, we had the pleasure of hosting our annual shop with the cop. We were able to reach out to 17 Inkster uh children across seven families. We took them over to the Meyer at 96 in Mildebelt and each child was uh granted to spend a hundred dollars on whatever they pleased. You will notice that some of our officers a little bit scruffier these days. Um, that is because the money for that is raised by the Inkster officers as well as some local businesses. Each officer sponsor a child and in return, they're able to receive a shaving deferment for the holiday season. So, they're a little bit scruffier, but it's for a good cause. And uh, we also had some help and I wanted to send a special shout out to um Charles Rizzo with Three Amigos Construction, he's actually in the back. He sponsored a family to help out, fill the gap so we can reach more families. Um, we had some help as well with the shopping from our Inkster Citizen Police Academies as well as Tamika Tilly, stepped up and helped shop with the families, with our officers, and it was a really, really great event. It's one of my favorite days of the year. And lastly, I wanted to apologize for Ms. Cooper. I um thoroughly yelled at the individuals who did not tell me that the paper drive was last week. I just got back and I had no idea. It's one of my favorite days of the year, so I wasn't able to participate in the Goodfellas Drive, but I'll be there with bells on next year. Thank you all.
All right, you're out.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel.
Good evening.
I just come here today, really just uh not even to address you guys, but to stand up on behalf of you guys to let everybody know, the citizens know that, no, first I gotta apologize. My dear, my dear, my dear mom. I'm sorry for not being there last week for the newspaper drive, you know, like, because I was a little sick, all right? I only got three minutes, but let me say, I was a little ill, but I'm here back now, here. But the first thing I wanted to say, I wanted to apologize to you guys because it is about us, it's about, it's about new goodfellas. It's not about Mr. Gabe can't do it all on his own. You understand? The, the pastor and them, they can't do it on their own. It's about everybody stepping on up and stepping in the gap and filling in the gap. But more than anything, I want to let the city know and the residents to know that we got to just be patient with this new administration. Because I'm sure, as you said, young man, that uh we don't want to be a part of none of those uh federal cases and none of those things. So once this uh council here gets a forensic audit of what's been going on, city attorney and uh CEO, and then we'll see where we laying at. Because we know that Mr. Patrick Wembley and his new council, you know, they have just come in here and they come out with, in a, in a, like a cannonball. They been running to unite this city, so let's be patient with this council. Don't try to hold, throw the, the burdens of the last administration on the lap of them. We have to just be conscious and know what's going on. And then the last administration, they did some good things. They did some good things, God bless them. But right now, we with this administration. And right now, we have to take, take account and uh, uh, do some checks and balances. Hey, I was watching it before I came in here a little later, I was just with the kids earlier. But I know what's going on here. I've been watching, I've been passionate about this city. Hey, I've been passionate with folks who I didn't even support. You understand? So we got to just learn to just be patient with this administration. That's all I come here and say now. Be patient with this administration. Be patient with Brother Bivins, uh, and be patient with Parks and Rec. Be patient with the chief, be patient with the chief, be patient with all you guys to do a little bit better than we was doing before. And make this an inclusive situation, an inclusive city. There we are. And just be patient. That's more than anything, and we won't be a part of that crap. And I love you all. God bless you. Merry Christmas. Hey, 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 uh, you go, we gonna get uh the rest of those kids sponsoring? And we gonna get the rest of the kids take care of, because Inkster take care of Inkster. God bless y'all. Spread love.
Pastor Jean Overman?
So I will use my pastor voice and speak loud and clear. Actually, my first meeting, so excited to see all the new council people and those returning. Uh, just want to speak um authority and power over you to do excellence as expected. Uh, very excited to report that we have sold out, so there's no more tickets to the gala. If you didn't get an opportunity to get yours, so excited for all of those that support and appreciate the work that is done. As I spoke today on a webinar with Harvard and with Per Institute about the excellence of our Camp Inspire program, we will be celebrating these kind of things this week. So I ask that you were unable to attend, or if you will get to attend, that you continue to pray for us. Because I believe that we do so much better when we really have one another at heart. So if you see our weaknesses, pray for us. And not run one another down, but really pray for us so that Inkster can be the example that Wayne County looks to. So God bless you and Happy New Year.
All right, move right in. City Clerk?
Um, I just want to make announcements tonight in regards to City Hall's holiday schedule. So we will be closed on Friday, December 20th from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. We'll be closed on Monday, the 23rd of December from 12 P, um, 12 PM to 4:00 PM. And then we will be closed on December 24th through Wednesday, January 1st. We will reopen for regular hours on Thursday, January 2nd at 8:30 AM. And essential services will be available during those periods as well. Thank you.
Thank you. City Treasurer?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to let everyone know, uh, as the clerk mentioned, we will be closed. Uh, City Hall's gonna be closed during part of the holidays. Uh, I know a number of people like to pay their uh tax bills, the winter tax bills that recently went out. A number of people like to pay them by the end of the year. Um, you know, the uh last day is gonna be on Monday, a week, uh, December 23rd, a week from tonight. Um, we're gonna be open a half day on that day. After that, you can leave a check um in the drop box and we'll apply that. Uh, payments should, payments need to be applied by the end of the year. A lot of people want to claim it on, on the, this year's taxes. So uh, if you don't get into City Hall before we close for the holidays, you can leave a check in the uh drop box that's outside the front door. Should not leave cash, obviously, we can't uh make any accommodation for that. But you can pay online, there uh generally is gonna be a 3% fee associated with that. Um, but we, we try to make, uh, make sure everyone that wants to pay before the end of the year will be um, you know, if any payments are, are, are put in the box between the time that we close and New Year's, we will make sure that those payments get applied uh as of the 31st of December and you can make the uh necessary claim on your income taxes, so. With that said, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right. Counselwoman Washington?
Okay, um, it will be eventful, uh, two weeks. I'm thinking about all the events that we had until the Easter that I was able to attend. I'm sorry, I wasn't able to attend, uh, Sister Cooper, but I will make sure we can donate tonight for the goodfellas. Um, I was able to uh join the Inkster Commissional Agency of Agent. Um, they had a uh holiday together party where I was forced to sing. I uh, uh, learned some actual uh songs and was able to give back to the community and give gift cards and um gifts. Um, also, we had the NAACP Census Kickoff Event last Monday where our Inkster Census Chair, uh, Miss Berger was able to come and speak. Barge, I'm sorry, Miss Barge, was able to come, to come and speak about the census and how she would um be able to, what she, what she'll be able to do in the city of Inkster. Uh, also, the tree, tree lighting, I wasn't able to come, but it was really exciting. We had the Mickey Mouse Santa. So um, I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Counselwoman Chilton? Good evening.
Just piggybacking on what Counselwoman Washington talked about with the senior holiday luncheon. Uh, fortunately, I was late, so I didn't have to sit. So that part, I got in and I saw everybody sitting down and then I saw pictures later and I said, oh, what they doing? I found out they were singing carols and everything like that, so you all were blessed that you didn't have to hear my altoon voice. And I did attend the Christmas tree lighting, it was nice, it was very, very, very cold. Uh, big shout out to our police officers and the fire department and all those who stood out there and braved those elements because that was brutal. Uh, I got the three.
Uh, I got to thank Santa Claus when he came and officially welcomed him to the city. That was awesome. And then the Goodfellas paid for it. I just want to really vouch for the Goodfellas. I was out there from like nine to five on that Thursday or Friday. And, okay, Friday. And I did take my little hour break, went over to the rec center, get some chili and stuff, came over here to the city hall, got a few, uh, people to support. But it was lonely on that corner by myself. And I had my mom out there for like the first hour, but you know, God bless her heart, she getting older. And she couldn't brave those elements like, you know, that I could. So, uh, she helped me in that, but a lot of people thought I was Birdman on the corner. Now, Birdman came past and told me he wasn't used to standing out there. So I just want to vouch for the Goodfellas and just in their upcoming, um, uh, paper drive. If, if you can bring the elements and you have the free time, please do participate. It's hard being out there by yourself when the traffic get going and you standing out there in the lane and you can't get back on the sidewalk. And, um, I'm, I'm getting older. AT&T took its toll on my body and trying to holler to them cars with that jug in my hand. And then it like turned green on me and I can't get back on the sidewalk. I was kind of scared a couple seconds. But I, I committed to supporting, um, the Goodfellas as best I could. And I, I honored that commitment and I was just blessed enough to be able to help families that I don't even know just get back in that capacity.
Awesome. Thank you. Councilwoman Watley?
Uh, yes, I would like to, uh, thank housing commissioners for helping me resolve a problem I was called about this weekend that involved me. I, um, gave her a call. She in turn called Director Bowlinger. And the situation was resolved for the gentleman who didn't have heat. So I just want to thank her for, uh, being so effective in the position she's in.
Awesome. May I approach you? Are you want to, out of respect?
I just want to wish each and everyone a happy, safe holidays and all of us, we will be back here in January. Thank you.
Councilman Shaw?
I just, I just also want to echo that and, I just want to also echo that and wish everyone a happy holiday and a safe New Year. And one thing just came to mind, Ms. McClinton, I don't know if you, uh, I want to thank Glenn Anderson's office for the monies that he brought to the city of Inkster. I don't know if you was aware of that or can speak to that? Or can the treasurer speak to that, uh, the five thousand sold dollars that Glenn Anderson, uh, office was able to?
Yeah, I think, um, is that the C, is that CDBG funds? I know there was a little more than five thousand that,
I think so, that's what it is.
Um, but those, those monies have, have not. We, we're just still in the process of getting that, uh, that money, uh, from the county. I don't think those funds has been determined exactly how they're going to.
So I'm hoping, I'm looking forward to Mr. Glenn Anderson's office bringing those dollars to us and thank you. For parks, yes. It was for parks. That's what it was. How much was it? About five? About fifty, yeah. So I want to thank Mr. Anderson's office for, uh, for those dollars. That's all I have, Mr. Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Just a couple questions, Mr. Matt.
Yes, sir.
Jerome Bivins. Over there, Harriet Street. I don't know if you ever found the sewage, the main sewage, but, but it need to be, it need to be cleaned out. Hey, I know they found one. When he brought the, uh, the kind of truck over there, they found one of them. The other one, they kind of up in the bushes over there and it's not really been touched. And the people, basements over there, I mean, the houses, because they got them trampled, they're flooded. So we somehow we're gonna have to try to clean them. You know what I'm talking about? Right there, we between Pine and, uh, Pine and, uh, Andover, you know, on the right side of where I live at. Okay, another thing, another thing, uh, a question I, I need to ask. On the testing, okay, was this a state, uh, was this, was this the state that came out here and tested the water? And said that we did, we failed the, uh, the lab test?
No, they provided for the kids. We drive the kids off to individual homes. They were stretching a lot of the hormones that. Definitely that's what we wanted to see normally for six hours. Normally they're waiting to test first thing in the morning. They take a chill one, they take a sound one, it's seven o'clock and then this sounds, there's the water coming from the line. And then they back, they shoot it back through the ass and then that'll give them.
So my question, we did that?
Yes.
Did we? Okay, all right. One more, one more, uh, Mr. Mayor, maybe, maybe the treasurer can, uh, ask. During the last administration, there was some, if I'm not mistaken, maybe I was just hearing. Was there some raises given last year?
For, uh, the budget that we're currently in?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, there, there were, uh, raises that were, that were included, um, both for, uh, via contract that, that were assumed to be labor agreement. I'm sorry, his question was, were there raises in the current, in the current budget that we're in that started July first of this year? The fiscal twenty twenty budget. Uh, I was saying, yes, there were, uh, raises that are currently in this year's budget. Uh, both from, from the standpoint of, uh, labor, uh, labor contracts. There were some that were, uh, per the contract as well as, uh, some to, uh, appointed.
So you do have a, a mechanism that's going to, I always notice when, when you're in debt. You give a raise, that, 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 that raise is ongoing along with that person working. So I'm just figuring out, uh, are we gonna be in enough shape to have them, uh, that amount of money booked on over for the year that we gotta go if we're running a debt now?
Well, well, the raises are generally one-time raises and the mechanism is, is through the budget approval process. Those, you know, we, we, um, provide detailed, uh, information on each of the salary positions. Uh, and that, that information is, is either approved or not approved via the budget.
So that's lump, you give them lumps on, a raise?
No, they're, 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 generally speaking, their annual, their annual amount or the hourly amount that they're paid is, is, is increased. And then they get that throughout the, uh, fiscal year.
So it was, if you give me a fat out of raise, that fat out of raise going on every year?
Well, let, let's say, for example, if you have an employee that's making twenty dollars an hour. And the raise goes to twenty-two dollars an hour. During, once that raise is implemented, they now, every time that they work, they get paid at that rate.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I think people deserve it. But my question is, when you give these raises and you, do you know exactly where they sort of come from? And how we gonna deal with them?
The, and the raises are approved with all the other expenditures of the city. Generally speaking, most of the raises are approved at budget time. And so it's part of the overall expenditures and revenues that is, uh, part of the, the budget that the mayor submits and that council approves.
Because, uh, I'm, I'm like this, if we're running a debt and giving raises, money gotta come from somewhere.
For sure. Any, any, any expense that the city has.
When we get, get off of that, I won't get into it tonight, but maybe you get where this money's gonna come from, raises and various things that we're doing because,
It's, it, it's coming from the same, any expense that the city has, especially when we're talking about the general fund. Any expense that we have, whether it's raises or any, any other things. It's coming from the general fund. So it comes out of the, the, the revenues that, that the, uh, general fund has.
I think that basically what I, what I'm saying, um, that's it.
Okay, just for shortness of the hour, I want you all to, uh, join me this Thursday, um, at the Inkster Recreation Complex at twelve noon. We'll be having lunch with the mayor. We're going to, uh, be creating a wonder, Wonderland, um, from last luncheon that we had. We said we were gonna deck the hall. So I'm looking forward to everyone coming out and I'm looking for all of you on council, also administration to come out and let's mingle and mix with our residents. Um, we'll be having, it's, uh, real informal, so just to come out and give some information. I think different people come outside of the people that's here at council. If we come there, I think it's a really good thing, so we're gonna keep that going. Also, you will hear me talk about this from here on out till it's done. The census twenty twenty, everyone counts. It's important for all of us, where we're at, not just to tell three people, but to tell everybody and tell them again. Because if we're not counting or we're not being counted, then monies that we receiving as it relates to, as we're talking about the budget, then we look at a possible shortfall there as it relates to our state, our shared revenue and, uh, federal grants that we can actually apply for. And the amount of money that comes into our coffers. So it's important that we continue to talk about this every time we get a chance. The census twenty twenty, everyone counts. Everyone has to be involved. Lastly, well, in the combination thereof, we had our, uh, first tree lighting ceremony. I know we hadn't had it in quite some time. And I want to thank all of you that participated, all of you that, uh, just went the extra mile. I have a long list of people that, uh, I would like to thank, but I just have to point out DPS. Uh, Jennifer from my office, she really just took control of that whole situation and turned everything. It, it was really beautiful. Uh, Cordon's Chocolate gave us a hundred chocolate candies. They're a hundred-year-old company right here within our community. If you haven't or have them, you guys need to try them. All right? Um, and lastly, Merry Christmas. Happy New Year to everyone. Let's go into twenty twenty together. I'm calling for a German right now. I know we don't have a closed session, so, so move. Support. Move to support. All eyes.